Thank you. I'd like to call the meetings to order. Welcome everybody to the Easton School Committee meeting of Thursday, February 1st, 2024. This meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format where attendance by committee members may be remote or in person, and remote attendance shall count toward quorum. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on DCA. For tonight's meeting, we have Jackie Wiseman, committee member Jackie Wiseman, participating remotely, and all other attendees are present in Simmons Lecture Hall. This meeting is open to the public. Members of the public attending in person who wish to make comments will be invited to do so during the public comment period of tonight's meeting and will be required to state their name and address before beginning their comments at that time. All right, so moving on to the first item on the agenda tonight is a vote to accept a donation on behalf of Global Partners and a local Exxon Mobil station. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. Principal Kelly Kavanaugh is here this evening to describe this donation, and we hope that the school committee will vote to accept it this evening with thanks to the generous donor.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. So Global Partners, which is one of the Northeast's largest operator of gas stations and convenience stores, nominates through a collaboration with local Exxon Mobil distributors, schools to receive grants specifically to use in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. This year, we're really excited to share that Oliver Ames was chosen for a $500 grant, which we will use towards a STEM program.
All right, great. Any questions or comments from committee? Nancy?
I have a question. So in accepting this donation, which is wonderful, are there any ties? Do we have to do anything specifically?
Yeah, specifically, it asks that it's spent, like I said, towards STEM products, and that there's a projects, and there is a request that we send photos of us putting it into action to the company.
So that's all you have?
That's it.
Just send pictures?
Correct.
Thank you.
Just a reminder for the community, STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math Initiatives.
Okay. All right, great. Any other questions from the committee before we move this to a vote?
Just on the photos, are they then usable by them for additional material or advertising in any way, or is it restricted just in terms of the students who are being photographed?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Anytime we share photographs, we make sure that they have releases.
Okay.
So we wouldn't allow anybody to use photographs that have students in it that hadn't been prior, hadn't received prior permissions.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All righty, can I get a motion then to accept this donation of $500 to be used towards STEM programming from Global Partners and our local Exxon Mobil station?
Second, Loomis.
Okay. Oh, so moved.
So moved, Loomis.
And can I get a second?
Second, Persia.
Great. Roll call vote?
Deluki, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Loomis, yes.
Persia, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kavanaugh. All right. Next up on the agenda is the Youth Health Survey presentation. Dr. Cabral.
Okay, so we have, they're coming up now, we have Kendall Bennett that works with, I'll call him YMC A, who is our data analyst for, or has been our data analyst since 2015 on this project, and also Director Craig Davidson, who led the organization of this survey in the district. I'm going to turn it over to them for the presentation, which will not only go over the data that was culled from this project, but also give you just a quick background of the preparation for this in terms of a committee of people that got together for questions and so on. Yes.
We are honored to be here tonight as part of a team that will present the data findings of the results of the Youth Health Survey to our school community and our school members. Before we delve into the data, I would like to express my sincere gratitude to the Youth Health Survey Committee who reviewed and created new questions formulating what this year's survey would look like, and they were instrumental in ensuring the relevance and depth of the data that we'll see tonight. On December 11th, we conducted the survey, reaching out to students in grades seven through 12th to gain valuable insights into various aspects of their health and well-being. Tonight, we have the privilege of presenting the findings that have emerged from this comprehensive and important undertaking. This year, we have also introduced a new dimension to the survey by incorporating sections specifically focused on belonging. Understanding the sense of belonging among our students is crucial for creating a supportive and inclusive school environment. This addition reflects our commitment to addressing the holistic well-being of our youth beyond just physical health. Throughout the presentation, we will explore key themes and trends, providing you with a comprehensive overview of the current state of your youth within our school community. The data collected will not only shed light on the challenges our students may be facing, but will also serve as a foundation for informed decision-making to enhance their overall educational experience. As we proceed, it's important to publicly thank Kendall Bennett and Kelly Reed. They have spearheaded this work for many years within the Easton Public Schools. Their leadership and thoroughness in completing the data and compiling the evidence is greatly appreciated by our administrative team. Ms. Bennett will lead us through a data presentation, and there will be a chance for members of our school committee to ask questions at the end.
I'm told to put this on. Hi, everybody. My name is Kendall Bennett, and I have worked since 2017 on the Easton Youth Health Survey. I'm a biostatistician by trade, and I am the evaluator for Easton Wings of Hope, which has a drug-free communities grant. That's sort of how we ended up getting funding for this project, I believe, around year seven or eight of 10, and a lot of really great work has happened in the community. But one of the requirements for that grant is that you report back on very, very, very specific questions that you ask your students, of which are included in this particular survey. So as Craig mentioned, there was a great committee that met, I think, right in this room at least on one occasion, to go over the questions. That was a really rich experience. I really appreciated the opportunity for that, and it felt truly very collaborative. So the survey was developed from the 2023 National Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and then also looking at previous surveys that had been done at Easton Public Schools, but there was a real strong focus this year on being very closely aligned with that National Youth Risk Survey, so you won't see very many deviations at all. The survey was administered electronically via a secure system called Qualtrics, which is a very popular survey software tool, and that took place in both schools on December 11th, 2023. What we do when we get the data back is there's a process for cleaning the data. The data is extremely anonymous from start to finish. There's nothing collected. There is some demographic questions asked, but the school actually never gains access to individual, like, well, student-level data. That only comes to me, and I don't know the students, so that type of thing really helps to sort of maintain that anonymity. Parents have the opportunity to opt students out. We had about 90 opt-outs this year. Students have the ability to opt themselves out, and students are also reminded that they don't have to answer any particular question. So if you want to skip a question, if you want to skip every question, if you want to make up the answer to every question, that is totally your prerogative, and it's going to be, you know, I'm going to do my best to kind of remove those surveys whenever I can. But we had a really good sample this year, for sure. So overall, we saw 76% school representation from the high school, which is a little bit lower, but that's okay. It's still a very representative sample. Like I've mentioned, and I'll mention over and over again, it's a voluntary survey, so it's okay if people choose not to take it. 84% representation with the middle school, which was very in line with what we typically see. I will say, we were a little lighter with the older grades, so 11th and 12th grade. You'll see a lot of the data is extremely positive, but just keep in mind a little bit that the student population might be a little bit skewed younger, because we did have a lower representation from 12th and 11th, but still very, still a very stable sample, very representative sample. So when we look at that grade-level data, we really can compare very confidently year over year. All right, so jumping right into the high school data, I'm going to go through the high school data first, then I'll do the middle school data, and I do have some notes because it's a lot of numbers. So what we saw from the high school is, I think Dr. Cabral put it really well, in her first reaction to the data was, we've kind of seen a bounce back to pre-pandemic levels. So you kind of saw this, like, really big jump in mental health needs during the pandemic, and then after, it's kind of starting just to kind of level back out to what we were seeing before the pandemic, which is certainly things moving in a positive direction. You will notice on there, we have some comparison schools, so that would be other schools that are anonymous, and they're similarly demographically, they're in Massachusetts, and they surveyed within a month of you. So schools that have very similar data. There's, there won't be state or national data for a year or more. So this is the best we have in terms of comparison, which is definitely helpful to see. I'm not going to talk through every number. You guys will have the recording. I can see every number quite close. A new question was added on the previous survey by the National WRBS, asking about general mental health. I get a lot of questions about this, because there is no question regarding, like, anxiety. It's really more focused on depression, suicidal behaviors and ideations, and so this question sort of more generally, like, poor mental health was added, and this year, we saw 18% of OA students saying that their mental health was not good most of the time or always. This was down 8.5% from the last survey. And you will see consistently with this data that female students are two to three times more likely to indicate these mental health concerns than male students are. All right, indicators of personal safety. So we can see here that there's been, there has been a little bit of variation. We did see an increase in bullying at school, and when, during kind of our initial digestion of this data, Dr. Cabral was mentioning the focus that there has been on psychological well-being in school, and so sometimes this data goes up because there's a problem, and there very well could be, but sometimes this data comes up because people are more aware, right, and are more, are thinking about it and are reflecting on experiences, and so we definitely saw a jump in that bottom number there in students reporting that they have been bullied on school property. 4.5% of respondents indicated that bullying had prevented them from attending school at least once in the past year. Even though the bullying number did jump, that number didn't change from the previous year, whether or not they had not attended school because of bullying. We have a couple slides here on sexual health and safety. I try to separate it out. First here, we have measures of sexual assault or rape. So we did see those numbers. We definitely saw sexual assault drop significantly during the pandemic. Certainly, there was less opportunities for young people to be unattended. There were, I'm sure, less parties and social gatherings and things like that, so that was sort of a positive effect, if some of that time spent at home was, like, lower sexual violence behaviors. That number didn't really change from the last survey to this survey. And then on the next slide, we have just general sexual behavior, so asking young people if they've ever had sexual intercourse in their lifetime. That number has been on the decline for quite a while now, and it continues to do so, which is something certainly that we're happy to see. Oh, and just, oh, sorry, one addition to the last one. I skipped a page on my thing. Of the past year, 16% of students in high school had indicated that they had had sexual intercourse, but only 8% of students had had sexual intercourse in the past three months. So although some, although students have tried it, not necessarily every student is continuing to do that behavior on a regular basis. Thank you. All right, jumping over to substance use. So these numbers have dropped like a rock, which is really great to see, and it's something I think at first the administration was feeling a little bit like it's hard to believe, but seeing the comparison schools, I think, has made people feel a little bit more comfortable. Not that it's ever okay that 1 in 10 students is using marijuana, but it is nice to see that these numbers are decreasing and decreasing pretty significantly. In the past 12 months, 5% of students reported that they've been offered drugs on school property, which is down from 7.5% last year, and it used to be as high up as 16% a few years ago. So on the next slide, in talking about substance use, you can pause for a second, in talking about substance use and how much those numbers have dropped, it kind of, it piqued our interest in looking a little bit closer at some of the previous year's data and the case studies that we could kind of run when we're comparing. So every student takes a survey every two years, and so theoretically, we should be able to sort of track the grade-level behavior of that grade from one survey to the next. So we looked at just the ever-use of alcohol. So in looking, studying just the class of 2023, looking at pre-pandemic in the blue and during or post-pandemic in the green, I'll just give a shout out to Kelly Reed from Easton Wings of Hope for designing all my slides for me, because I ran out of time, so I appreciate that they're beautiful. So the class of 2023 in 7th grade, 5% of them had ever drank alcohol, more than a few steps, like, they had actually drank a drink of alcohol. By 9th grade in two years, that number had jumped up to 16%, and that's, it's pretty normal, and every grade is different. You'll see when we go to other grades, they have, you know, different 7th grade use rates, and it changes. But when they had gone to 9th grade, the number had jumped by 11% to 16%, and then that following year had jumped a little bit more, 13%, up to 29%. And so that's what we would probably see as, like, kind of a traditional trajectory. It's actually light, I would say. It's a little bit lower. The biggest thing that you see is the biggest jump does tend to happen between 9th grade and 10th grade, and 10th grade and 11th grade, because that's when students start to get their license, a little bit more freedom, and they're spending a little bit more time away from home, things like that. So looking at the next class, so class of 25, same grades, but different years. So they took their first survey in 2019 in the 7th grade, and they actually had a higher use rate, so the double of the students had used alcohol in their lifetime. Like I said, there's just variations between one grade to another. Looking at them two years later, which we are now deep into the pandemic in 2021, that number did not increase very much, and now they've actually used less than the class before them, at only 15%. And that number continues to only barely kind of creep up as we move forward during the pandemic. So we think the pandemic effect on risky behavior, such as substance use, but also sexual behavior and other things that sort of happen when young people gather, is really been affected by the pandemic. And now just kind of looking at two more of these, and you can just do both of them at the same time. Looking at two more of these, so these are the class of 2022 and 2024, so based on how the years felt, they were surveyed in 8th, 10th, and 12th grade, so you can kind of see that effect a little bit more, because they're a little bit older at each survey spot. So for, in 8th grade, we had pretty similar, 13% and 16%. Pre-pandemic, class of 2022 increased 22% by the time they got to 10th grade. Class of 24 only increased about half of that when they got to 10th grade, because it was during the pandemic. And then you can see that complete difference with a 30% increase for the class of 2022 from 10th grade to 12th grade, and only a 4% increase for the class of 2024 from 10th grade to 12th grade. That's a lot to digest, but I think, looking at it, I like presenting it this way, because I think it really shows the pandemic's positive effect on substance use and sort of this unprecedented opportunity that people have. And I do the survey for a lot of towns, and everybody's looks really similar, so it's sort of this unprecedented moment where young people are still using, but they maybe are using later, and less of them are using, and so you have this moment where you have some really healthy, developing young brains, that it's, like, going to be a really great opportunity. I really hope, you know, we've had a lot of conversations, like, is this going to continue? Is it going to go back to normal? Or now is everyone's older sibling not really drinking, so then they're going to set a good example for their younger siblings? So this is something positive to look at. I am not going to go through the whole thing again for you, but you can just go through it pretty quick. We can just, yeah, skip through. This is the same thing for vaping. The difference with vaping is that there was, like, this incredible educational campaign, and young people were learning about vaping and its risks. So you see this kind of really different experience from, say, the class of 22, who many of them started vaping much younger, all the way to, you know, all the classes after that, they had a much lower rate of use in middle school, because middle schoolers are much smarter about the dangers of addictive nicotine. So just another, another version of the same story, I would say. All right. Can I just pause there? Was there any questions from the committee on that kind of meaty slide? All right, approaching the end of the high school. So, all right, so one of the things that we measure, and we measure closely, are how young people perceive substances. It's really important. It's something that Easton Wings of Hope works on really closely. The research has always shown, not has always shown, the research has shown in the past decade or so that young people deal best with positive peer pressure, right? So feeling like it is typical not to use substances, feeling like they're in the norm, as they are, if they don't use particular substances, making sure they understand that substances are dangerous to use, and making sure that they know that their friends and their family don't want them to use. So those are some important measures. I put one of them on the screen here, so their perception of risk. You can, you can see over the years how different substances have changed. So on the left-hand side here, we have alcohol, which kind of wanes. You have your first, they're the first two bars here. The first one is drinking one to two alcoholic beverages nearly every day, which students tend to be a little more wary of, and drinking five-plus alcoholic beverages in a row, what we would consider binge drinking, is the second question. We still see only 60% of students finding those things risky. We would really love to see that number a little bit more. What's even more surprising, middle schoolers really don't think they're risky, so we'll get there when we get there. We see young people sort of at a similar level, feeling like smoking cigarettes is somewhat dangerous, but as I'm sure we all remember, we were all invincible at one time when we were younger. We have seen really great growth in that sort of middle bar there that has an upward trajectory, that's smoking marijuana once or twice a week. So students are starting to understand a little bit more of the riskiness of smoking marijuana. This is the first time at 55% that we're firmly above, more than half of students think that it's a dangerous thing, so that's really great to see. Prescription drugs, not prescribed to them, that's not, it's not always a focus at this young age for, like, a coalition like Easton Wings of Hope, they, they're primary things, they focus on alcohol, marijuana, and vaping, but it is always something to keep in mind, make sure young people are aware that prescription painkillers and other things like that are dangerous for them. And then on the right-hand side, we have electronic vapor products, which has really jumped up and down on whether or not young people find them risky. We didn't ask that question prior to 2019, so we really don't know kind of what the baseline was before. When we were in 2019, where you see that high bar, was when there was that really, there was a lot of stuff in the news about, like, acute effects of vaping and people being hospitalized and needing lung transplants, and that's why we saw it really high, and then the pandemic hit, and some of that education kind of dropped off a little bit, and that wasn't in the news quite as much. That's always an uphill battle, but it definitely seemed like the students really are starting to understand clearly by their use rates that vaping is extremely dangerous. We did see some really positive stuff around parental perception of parental disapproval and parental perception of peer disapproval. So we want to know that people feel like their parents wouldn't want them to be using, so at least 90% of students report that their parents would disapprove of them using every single one of the substances that we have listed here. So 90% is great to see, and 95% of students report that their parents would not be okay with them using electronic vapor products, which is also amazing to see, because it did not always used to be the case. 75% of students indicate that their friends would disapprove of them using electronic vapor products, which is a big jump from the last survey where it was 68%. So we're having a little bit better of that peer-to-peer conversation about expectations and things like that. All right, the last slide that I have for OA is around belonging, so we have this kind of new data around belonging, and so we ask all these new questions that were, that were brought by Kelly and by Carol's, and there were some great additions to the survey, but we don't have a ton of, like, year-over-year to compare about yet. One of the parents actually suggested a question about asking how many peers that students feel like they can talk to. We asked them a lot about, do you have an adult outside of school, inside of school you can talk to? A parent suggested adding a question about how many peers they have. So we had 97% of students reporting they had at least one peer they could talk to about things that were important to them. 75% said they had three or more peers that they could talk to, which I thought, with absolutely nothing to compare to, it sounded nice to me. We are going to continue to tease out this data a little bit. One of the sort of primary things that we started with, besides looking at grade and gender, which we always do kind of run some cross tabs around that, I bucketed students into, students who identified as white and students who identified as students of color, and we saw some pretty big differences in these particular data points, so I think there's going to be a lot more to do here. Most significantly, 62% of students of color reported feeling like they belong at school, while 76% of white students felt the same way. And similarly, only 61% of students of color reported feeling close to people at their school versus 74% of white students. So I think there's a lot more to understand with those numbers here. It'll be really interesting to see what we can do with some year-over-year stuff. So I think I can invite you up now.
Yeah. So I'm going to take a moment just to share with you some of the current supports that we have at Oliver Ames to address the health items that are brought up in our Youth Health Survey. So first of all, our curriculums in health, bio, writing seminar, our marketing classes all include things on the danger of vaping, as well as other risky behaviors. We have poster campaigns around the school, around the education of risks with vaping, and we've also partnered with our student organizations with Easton Wings of Hope for a poster campaign at the end of last year around, called the Take Back Your Bathrooms Campaign, which is to try to prevent vaping in the bathrooms. We have diversionary programs that are run through our nurses for offenders of vaping and marijuana, and we've also started to use, for students who really do identify with having issues with addiction, a program we found success with in Brockton called Independence Academy, where students can go for 10 days and get specific treatment, and we use that as an alternate to suspension in order to help students who really do need that support. And then we continue, as I said, to partner with the 84 and, and use student organizations to continue the work in our school on the dangers of vaping. In terms of mental health, we're incredibly fortunate to be part of a grant program this year with the JED Foundation. We received a $25,000 grant to go through a three-year program, which identifies areas of growth for us in terms of supporting the social-emotional learning of our students, gives us a variety of options in order to more successfully address that in the space, and then gives us the tools and supports that we need to do so, and then does post-work survey data to see the impact of our work. So we're in year one of that. We also have, our adjustment counselors have had some PD and training around different supports, DBT, CVT supports for students with anxiety and struggles with mental health, and so they run small groups, as well as groups for transfer students, and groups around students who have suffered significant loss or grief. And we do our screenings with the nurses, our ESPT screenings, and our SOS screenings, which are screenings for risky, unhealthy behavior in ESPT, and then SOS is specifically around mental health and suicide. And then we've increased our mindfulness fitness classes, so we now have advanced mindfulness fitness, so students can continue to take that course outside of 9th and 10th grade. And then finally, when it comes to the work around belonging, as you guys know, our school, one of our major school improvement goals this year is around DEIA work. So that's been a great, the things we've done so far this year have been great. We have a parent group who's been giving really great advice to me as principal as ways that we can create a more inclusive environment. We have student groups specifically focusing on our BIPOC population, as well as our LGBTQIA+ plus, and they have come up with suggestions and advice and feedback for us as administration of how we can become a more inclusive environment. And then we continue to grow our clubs. So when I first started here, we had Best Buddies and Multicultural Club in GSA, and since then, we've now added Active Minds, which is a club that supports de-stigmatizing mental health, the Jewish Culture Club, and Club United, which brings together students from Hispanic and Latina, Latino backgrounds, and they do a lot of activities to celebrate their culture and their life. And then for next steps, so this work with the JED Foundation is going to be really essential in identifying the additional mental health supports that we can provide our students. We have a very generous grant from Sarah's Village, and we're working with Easton Wings of Hope to bring guest speakers and programming to our students for mental health. We're going to continue to grow these student groups. Every year, they do more and more awareness activities for students in our building, and one of the things that we're currently working on is a series called Beyond the Stereotypes, where students come together and learn about the differences that our different cultures have, and what the difference is between race and ethnicity, to try to create a space where we don't make assumptions of people based on their looks, and that's been going really well so far this year. And then finally, we have been looking in, like I said, additional diversionary programs like Independence Academy to support students who have substance use violations, and trying to find ways to do more restorative approaches in lieu of suspension to help change behaviors. Do you have any questions about those?
Thank you. Thank you. Principal Kavanaugh mentioned the, I believe she mentioned the Take Back the Bathroom Campaign. Actually, Easton Wings of Hope won a National Blue Ribbon Coalition Award, basically as a result of that student-led work, which is really, really cool. And it's, I work with a lot of these groups, and it's really exciting to see how involved the students are at both OA and EMS. It's, it's great. It's, it's great. Okay, moving on to the middle school. This, this will be a little lighter because it's the same, same stuff you've already seen in, in different formats as well as we won't do that sort of like longitudinal piece because that covered both middle school and high school. And I just want to, I do want to point out that a number of the, especially on these first two slides, a number of the questions are asked differently at the middle school level. Where at the high school level, it asks in the past 12 months, have you done X or Y? Or have you experienced X or Y? This asks middle schoolers, in your life, have you ever experienced that? Except for the depression, the very first question that asks in the past one year. But the rest of them, the timeframe just generally works a little bit better on a young mind if you don't ask them to limit it to a certain, a certain space there. So very similar to the high school, we see sort of a full kind of rebound to those pre-pandemic levels. Not much different on the bottom one, the attempted suicide is actually exactly the same as last year. And I should point out that as a follow-up question, it's not asked at the middle school level, but it is asked at the high school level. The percentage of students that actually report requiring medical treatment as a result of the suicide attempt that they said they experienced is very low. Sometimes people are a little bit shocked to see how high that attempted suicide number is. And I do find that sometimes find it comforting that the students did not necessarily require any type of medical intervention for their attempt. Same thing with the personal safety, the questions are asked on a much broader experience, broader timeframe there in their whole life. So have you ever not gone to school because you felt that you would be unsafe at school on your way to or from school? Every once in a while, I don't have a comparison to get, to offer. So this one went up very high. I expected to see schools at a much higher rate this year. I was kind of surprised when I didn't see it jump up. So this was more in line with what I had expected, just with everything going on nationally and school safety being such a, such a headline. I really expected that number to be a lot higher. So it's, it's interesting that we saw it here, but not at the high school level. The percentage of students reporting having been in a physical fight remains quite high. Middle schoolers, I think, tend to take that question kind of literally because it tends to drop a little bit as they get older and they sort of recognize the, what they would consider a fight as they age. A very high percentage of students report having been bullied at school and that, just like at the high school level, is higher than what we see in the comparison schools. We do ask an interesting question here. We ask if students have ever bullied a peer. 3% of students indicated that they had bullied a peer. But it is worth noting, as Dr. Garrawal found, that 126 students actually skipped that question. A very high percentage of students skipped that question. And so we believe that there are students that we're not sure if they've participated in bullying, yes or no. So it's kind of an interesting piece and a place for education. Or, or perhaps they did know and they were uncomfortable answering. Another, another possible option. Not much change in, in electronic bullying. All right, looking at sexual behavior, this is a, now that I look at a slightly misleading bar graph here, it only goes up to 5% on the top. So that orange bar is really not very high, it's 4.4%. But it does drop down really significantly. And we saw, I mean, right now at 0.7%, you're actually within the margin of error of zero. So I can't even definitively say that there's a single middle schooler. So this is very good data to, to see and hopefully maintain over the coming years regarding sexual behavior. All right, for lifetime substance use, similarly to the high school, we are seeing very low rates and they're really right online or kind of within the confidence interval of the comparison schools. There's not much change at all. We have 2% of middle schoolers reporting that they've been offered an illegal or offered a substance on school property, which is obviously much lower than we're seeing at the high school. So these rates are all extremely low and really great to see. So certainly the education that is going on at home, at school, around substances and other risky behaviors is, is definitely having an impact. All right, same thing with perception of risk, although you will notice that the middle schoolers think things are less risky than the high schoolers, which I always find to be very surprising. But maybe they haven't just received their full health education yet. They haven't gotten to that curriculum yet maybe. But they do tend to be, they do tend to be fearless, I would say. So we have seen an increase. You can see those sort of the right-hand bars and almost every grouping there does increase over time. So that's something that's really good to see. I mean, in 2017, you only had 39% of middle schoolers thinking smoking marijuana was dangerous. And now you're up to 54%, which is on par with the high school. So there is some good education happening. Things are moving in the right direction. And then just a couple more things I have on, on this particular question. We asked students a lot, because we use it in campaigns, if they prefer to hang out with people or go to parties where people aren't using marijuana or smoking alcohol. So we have 80% of respondents saying they prefer to hang out with people who don't drink alcohol and 81% of respondents saying they prefer to hang out with people who don't use marijuana. So that's where we would start a campaign that says, you know, most students don't want to hang out with someone who's using marijuana. That's sort of how that positive message gets reinforced. The two measures that have consistently indicated an increased tolerance, oh, the, the two measures for whether or not people prefer not to hang out with people who use marijuana or go to parties with people who use marijuana or drink alcohol, those numbers actually have decreased over time because students have indicated more, I worry about me, I don't worry about you, and a little bit more acceptance of each other. But 80% is still a really high number. We're seeing really high percentages of middle school students reporting that their friends and their parents don't want them using substance use. Again, 90% across all categories and there was no substance where less than 96% of students thought their parents would be upset about them using it. So parents are doing a great job of communicating their expectations of their students. We're seeing, that's very strong to see for sure. And then just getting to the belonging data at the middle school level, we see these numbers a little bit lower than the high school level. When we don't have much to compare to, I'm going to compare them against each other. So we see these numbers a little bit lower than the high school level. And I think it's kind of interesting, you know, as you, as you age, you make more friends within your school, you make more relationships with staff at the school, you have more relationships outside of school. So I think it will be interesting to watch the sort of grade progression of this and see how the relationships with others really contribute to their sense of belonging and even thinking about all the clubs that are offered. I'm sure that that has a really big impact on this type of thing. Same thing with the middle schoolers, when asked how many peers they can talk with about things that are important to them, 96% said they had at least one person and 70% said they had three or more. So a little bit lower than the high school, but very close. 74% of students reported that they had an adult at their school that they could talk to. That number is actually much higher among male middle school students than among female middle school students. I have no idea why, but I'm interested in finding out. And additionally, 90% of students reported having an adult family member that they can talk to about things that are important to them. Again, that was higher with male students than with female students. When looking at this data, when broken down into white students versus students of color, the most significant differences I saw were that 62% of students of color reported feeling like they belong at school. I think that was the exact same number as at the high school, while 81% of white students felt like they belonged. And the same thing, 62% of students of color reported feeling like the school is welcoming to people of different races, religions, cultures and identities versus 76% of white students. So definitely some, some learnings there and I think a lot more to, to look at in the future. And now I'll invite up Principal Carol for...
Can, can we ask a question first? So back to bullying, did the survey have a definition of what bullying is?
Great question, yeah. So the, actually the national survey comes with its own like blurb, like it's, you know, bullying is not when two students of equal strength fight, it's when, you know, it's repeated, it explains it. However, this year we actually did tweak it a little bit to align with Easton's definition so that we just, we didn't want to contribute to any confusion. So yes, there is like a blurb. Very good question.
So at the middle school, we had already had a school goal that was put in place the last year that was around bullying. And it's a goal that was around reducing bullying and cyberbullying. So that's a goal that as we evaluate with our school council this year, we'll probably bring back and sort of refocus with new action strategies because we really hoped for better results on this year's survey, but that really wasn't the case. We did reduce cyberbullying, which had jumped up for us tremendously right after the pandemic. So we were pleased with that, but we certainly want to go back to the drawing board with that school goal. So it's something that we have in place now and it's something that we'll continue to sort of take a look at with school council and make recommendations at the end of this school year. As part of that, we also had an anti-bullying message that's wrapped into our summer reading program. We have three different books that get read, sixth grade, seventh grade and eighth grade. All three of those have an anti-bullying theme. That's something that we will continue as well and we have in place now. We collaborate with Sarah's Village to bring programming around mental health and put an end to the stigma. The program's called Minding Your Minds, but specifically the program that we have for our seventh grade student is, students is around body image and eating disorders. And that's in place right now. We, over the last two years, have increased our adjustment counselor staffing and our nursing staffing. That's something that remains in place. We increased our adjustment counselors 0.5 this school year. We're going to continue with the ESPT testing in grade seven as well as the SOS screening in eighth grade that Kelly talks about. They're also doing at the high school. That's something that is in place now and will continue. We have a health and wellness club, the 97 Club. I believe, I believe the name is based on the Positive Norms Campaign around students not using tobacco. The problem with that is as our numbers improve, the club name keeps changing. So I get confused easily, but it used to be the 84 Club, now it's the 97 Club. I think based on the latest data, we might have to be the 98.5 Club or something like that. But, but it is, it's a great club with a great group of kids and that's something that will also be continuing. A lot of those same kids are also tied in with CATCA and they're currently in Washington, DC at that program right now. We incorporated, we're partnered with Jostens because of our school yearbook. And Jostens does a really nice job. They come with a, a program called The Harbor. And I, I've talked about this before at different times, but Mike Smith is a sort of a motivational speaker that I saw once. And he does a really nice job connecting to students. He's a, an ex-skateboarder and he takes different famous skateboarders or bike trick people or actors that are kids that the students recognize and can relate to. And he puts out an educational, an educational character building series called The Harbor. And we, because we partnered with Jostens for the yearbook, have access to all of this, including these online videos that are about a 10-minute video that really can grab a student's attention. And then it comes with a set of questions that can be part of a curriculum. So it's something that we can use for a variety of uses, whether it's anti-bullying, it could be restorative practice. So we have an entire library slideshow that we can go through and pick from depending on what is the issue. So it's something that's really nice, particularly with restorative practice. So that's something that we are, we're continuing. And I should just say, it was Kathy Mallett, one of our guidance counselors, and Heather Duquette that helped organize that into a library that's usable for all staff in the We have our Peer Leadership Program sponsored by the Anti-Defamation League, the ADL. They just have, they've been training over the last couple of weeks there at the middle school. Eventually those students, once they're trained, will go out, meet with us, some of our sixth grade classes and some of the lower grades. So we're looking forward to that. That's something that we've had in place, I think for the last two years and it will continue on. We have collaboration with community partners such as Sarah, Sarah's Village, Wings of Hope, HUGS, YMCA, other wellness organizations. It should be noted that Sarah's Village is where that partnership is where the Minding Your Minds program that we use currently in grade seven comes from that partnership. And we have our SAFE program, which is a partnership with the Eastern Fire Department. Chris Mills comes, he talks to our health classes. A lot of it is around substance abuse, anti-vaping messages and things like that. He also talks to our cooking classes about fire prevention, particularly in cooking as that's important. But he does a nice job with those programs and as the numbers show in the survey, that's probably having an impact, what we're teaching our students in health. Looking forward to the next steps, the anti-bullying educational initiative led by grade-level counselors. This is something we sat down and we're still digesting some of the data that came, you know, comes from this survey. So we're going to look, we're going to continue to talk about it. We've had a couple of meetings and we started to sort of come up with ideas, big picture ideas of things that we can do. So our guidance counselors typically will go and meet with different classes, whether it's during focus period, there's an educational component to guidance where they want to go and teach kids. So what we're looking at is adding something to grade six, seven and eight where they go in and as part of an anti-bullying message are going into classes to talk to the students about that. Now, in particular, one of the, one of the potential, I wouldn't call it a program, but one of the potential philosophies out there is something called Name It, Claim It, Stop It. We had our health teachers were recently at a PD workshop for the day. They came back with some great ideas that they shared to the group. So it's something that we think we want to sort of roll out to all the students in the very first class meeting of next year and then roll it out to the staff as well. So the staff understand what the program is. We'll have signs around the building that it's a, you know, catchy little Name It, Claim It and Stop It. And we think it'll be pretty simple, but it's something that we can roll out for the kids and the staff is pretty excited about it when we met on this. The collaboration with Sarah's Village is also going to increase programs for our sixth grade and our eighth grade. So in sixth grade, the programming is to target anti-bullying and in eighth grade is to target substance abuse and depression. So we're looking forward to that. And our continued collaboration with community partners, obviously Sarah's Village, Easton Wings of Hope, YMCA, HUGS and the Fire Department and other wellness organizations, that all will continue into the future. We have an anticipated contract with, and still we rise, to provide affinity spaces for our marginalized students. That's something that I just met with Carol Perez about yesterday, so we're excited about that. And then the IDEAS Middle School Student Conference, it basically is a conference to bring together diverse leadership within the middle school, get them excited and have them return to the school to create a more respectful environment. So we're excited about both of those programs as they move forward. And we're going to expand our SAFE program with the Eastern Fire Department next year to include grade six as well. So that's the first time our grade six students in health education class will get that benefit. Any questions?
What are your thoughts on the belonging results thus far?
Well, I mean, the belonging results, it's important data, but it's also one data point. So it's, it's hard to, for me to comment on that just yet. I mean, you want 100% of your students to feel comfortable at school, to feel safe at school, to feel like they connect to somebody and it's a place that, that they're welcome and want to be. So it's always difficult to look at anything that is less than 100% of the students. You know, in general, you know, one of the reasons why you team at the middle school level is because it does give smaller schools within the school, it makes kids sort of feel in a smaller environment. So a lot of the, and typically middle schools, you know, the higher performing middle schools across country all team. And I think a lot of that is with that in mind. But it's hard to say, you know, without, I mean, I'm, I think they're important numbers, but I would, I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what happens when we have two data points as opposed to one. So...
Was it a surprise to the guidance and counselors to see those numbers or was that what they would have expected?
No, I don't think it was a surprise, but it was, you know, something that we covered when we had, when we had the meeting, we went through some of the data points. So I wouldn't say that it was a surprise. You know, we've, we've seen like this group of students, particularly our eighth grade group of students, not that I mean anything by them in particular, but we've seen a change in the students since the pandemic. And, you know, if you, you know, a few years ago, you know, it was really challenging. I think it gets less challenging each year and we start moving towards what we were seeing as more normal in 2017 or 2019. So I think we get closer to that, but, but I wouldn't say that, you know, any of the data in belonging is something that surprises us at the middle school level. Because when you talk with middle school students, you know, they're, they're still at a developmental stage, they're struggling socially. A lot of them don't, you know, they, they're trying to fit in, but they're not fitting in. It's an incredibly difficult time. I mean, it's sort of why the, they're separated from everybody else during that period, you know? And they've become these forgotten years, but you know, the kids are making mistakes. You know, they're saying things they shouldn't, they're treating classmates in a way that they shouldn't. We're addressing that stuff all the time, but there's an educational piece to that. There's a learning curve to a piece to that, you know, to a lot of that. And so the, the numbers themselves, it doesn't surprise me. It's certainly something that we work on or want to work on, but we'll, it'll be, it'll be better when I have multiple data points to take a look at.
And I want to be mindful that Jackie's remote. If, if you have any comments or questions, Jackie, just go ahead and chime in. Nancy?
Yeah, this isn't part of, well, maybe it's part of the survey. There was a thing on the news last night, Massachusetts 361 for eighth grade students. Massachusetts 361, have you heard about that? Have you heard about that?
351?
351.
Yeah.
341. 3-something-one.
We have the district, the district representative in our school.
Okay. Good to know. And does, does that go along with this at all?
Project 351, well, Project 351 is, it's, it's named that because there's 351 towns in the state. Each town has a student that is a student leader that gets put in charge of it. They meet, I think they go to the State House, they meet there. There's one, you know, sort of like a rally, and the students come back to the school, and they try to do at least one major event that ends up being, you know, a fundraiser or something like that. Typically, for us, Project 351 has been a clothing drive that takes place in the spring.
Okay. So it doesn't have anything to, but it's more global as far as all the kids in the school?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. It was on the news last night, so I was looking for some of our kids, but I didn't see them. Okay, thank you.
All right.
I have a couple of questions, so, and I don't know if it'll be directed, maybe you might be able to answer as well. I know at the high school, we have the GSA club, so offering support to our LGBTQ-plus students. Did the Belonging data in particular, did that, was that an identifier on the survey?
So that is my identifier on the high school survey. Do not believe that question, that's at the middle school. So I have not run that cross tab, but we can definitely get it back to you for sure.
Okay.
Because we, we use, we use that pretty heavily in our DFC reapplication, because students who identified as LGBTQ had, did have a higher rate of substance abuse and mental health challenges, so we have 95% of them.
But it wasn't an identifier at the middle school level?
I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay.
95%.
So even without that, what are, what are the current supports and plans at the middle school levels for supporting students who identify as LGBTQ?
I mean, we do have a GSA. The club right now is not running. I've been in communication with the high school because they, the club's not running because there's no advisor. And typically, you know, typically, we'd have students that, you know, if they want a club to run, they'll talk to a teacher or, you know, something like that. We haven't had that, but I have been in communication with the high school GSA, because they do want the club to run. And there's talk of maybe somebody from the high school may run our club for the stipend. But there is a contractual stipend for it, and it is a club that we have, but it just hasn't run this year because not, not every club runs if a teacher doesn't apply for the stipend.
Another question was, were there, was there any, were there any questions around eating disorders or self-harm? Or anecdotally, do we have any, any kind of feedback from the school levels about incidents of that? Because I am hearing a lot within my peer group of students, particularly girls, but also boys, dealing with self-harm and eating disorders, and behavior having started in middle school and not being visible to families until high school.
Yeah, so there is a very commonly asked question, although I don't think Easton has ever asked it. I don't, I don't know exactly which instrument it comes from, maybe the state law. But there's a common question around self-harm, asking, like, have you ever hurt yourself? And he gives some examples, without trapping to die or, so there is a question for that. It's not been asked in Easton, but it is something that could be proposed for the next survey. I know a lot of school districts do add that question in around eating disorders. There was a lot of conversation with that in the committee meeting. There was a lot of discomfort with questions around eating disorders. So we kind of stay away from it. The only real question that's on the national survey is, what are you trying to do about your weight? Lose weight, gain weight, stay the same way? I'm not trying to do anything. I don't believe we end up using that question this year for the discomfort. I do know some other school districts are testing more questions. They're not testing, but they're validated questions, but they're using some other questions from some other instruments this spring. So we could maybe propose if those go well, we could propose those to the committee as well going forward, for sure.
Can you speak a little bit more to the discomfort on the committee? Where did that seem to come from? And is that something that we could discuss in a different way for the next survey?
Yeah, I think that the discomfort was around the wording of the question and just feeling like it was. Sorry, were you there?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So I believe it was around develop, the question developing poor body image. So asking questions about your body would make, would encourage someone who doesn't already have poor body image maybe think that maybe they should think about their body.
Yeah, and none of the questions get too specific around eating disorders, so I don't know if it was kind of like a, a word calculation, like, did you adjust the ingredients? Because it was just saying, are you trying to lose weight? And that doesn't speak to an eating disorder necessarily, but it could. And so there was a lot of discussion, like, a lot of discussion, I think, there was a lot of people in the committee that were genuinely very concerned about the topic. So it wasn't because they didn't want to know about the topic, but were just a little feeling like the question wasn't worded quite in a way that they were comfortable with. But, yeah, I think we could definitely propose some other, because they were looking for other questions. They weren't saying, like, no, for sure. So we could propose more in the future on that.
Yeah, and I'd like to explore a further conversation about if the research indicates that proposing questions has an effect on a student's behavior.
Correct, yes. Right, yes. So it is proven that asking a question does not increase the behavior.
Correct. We'll need to provide, we'll need to provide that information as an educational point for consideration. The committee may still feel the same way, but I think it's important to provide that information to them.
Yeah.
Jen, may I piggyback on your question of questions? Because I have those myself, but on that, questions missing or included, it seems like you indicated that questions were not asked about anxiety, but I hear that, my understanding is that that is increasing a lot post-COVID, especially at the middle school level, but effectively at all levels. Am I right in understanding that we did not ask questions about that this time?
So there was, there was only, there were the questions that you saw, plus there was a generalized mental health question that did include anxiety. So it said, like, how often the past month has your mental health been poor, you know, yeah, has your mental health been poor, something like that? And it said, including anxiety, depression, like, it was more of a, a much more generalized question. But question just hasn't existed on the national survey, so I have, I have yet to see, like, a validated question that was specific to anxiety. I have seen some towns come up with their own, but I have not seen any validated questions. But I'm always on the hunt, because it's like the number one question. So I think just depression just has, it's much easier to define clinical definition. That's why it gets like that. That's why it's been there for so long. But I think it's definitely a topic for the researchers at the moment.
Any other questions from the committee? And is Marvel online, or is it just?
Yes, she's over in the.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, so just want to call out to Marvel or Jackie, who are both online, if you have any questions or comments, just please go ahead and chime in before we move on.
I do have a couple of questions if they do not.
Okay.
Okay. So you had noted in a couple of places, callouts on, specifically, I believe it was on the Belonging pieces around gender and race. Were there other places where you noted any significant differences based on race or gender in any of the other questions?
The things I called out were the things that I noticed, but there's, oh, there's always more. The schools were provided with a full cross tab, so every question by gender, which was just male and female, so those were the only buckets that had the large enough sample, and then by grade. And so I think we're going to also do some cross tabulation of maybe the full survey by race as well. I did just send them the Belonging data by race. We can, we can always do more, and I say all the time, like, just, just call me with what your ideas are, and I will run the survey a different way. But, yeah, the, the things I've noticed are the things I said, but there's, yeah, certainly, I think as Carol starts to digest it more, and the principals and the guidance counselors start to digest it more, everybody will find something different that sticks out to them.
Did you have any other?
I had one other question. Just on, at one point, you had had the slide that showed sexual contact had dropped, but then I believe the footnote at the bottom specifically said sexual intercourse had dropped for middle schoolers?
Yeah, that was the only question we asked.
That's what my question was. So we are excluding anything else, and does it give the kids a definition of what is referred to as that?
No. And if they ask, they're just told to pick the question and go on. Yeah, it's very, it's just straight with what the national survey does.
Were there, were there any gender differences at either school that you recall with, with things like bullying, fighting, anything like that? Or was that?
Not that I, not, I'm sure there were, but I don't know off the top of my head, but I didn't.
Anything else from the committee? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. And I just want to call out a couple of things, if I can. First of all, I, and you, I think you can stay there for the next presentation. Okay. I wanted to call out that in introducing Kendall, I misrepresented her affiliation, because I had Kendall Bennett and Kelly Reed in my mind. We've had all our meetings with both of them. They've been amazing resources, as you could clearly hear. Kelly Reed from the Old Colony YMCA and Eastern Wings of Hope, and Kendall representing Eastern Wings of Hope. We want to make sure that we repeat how thankful we are to Eastern Wings of Hope, because there are costs associated with running this survey, and they have supported those efforts since 2015. I also wanted to note that the principals, I think, were first reviewing this information about a week and a half ago, or, or close to a week ago. So we wanted to make sure we presented this high-level information, but all of the questions you're asking are things that they're asking and running cross tabulations to review that. Sometimes, as we're looking at something and we're really thinking through a question, really thinking through an issue, and we're throwing ideas at one another, it helps us to generate some wonderings, and then the wonderings help develop cross tabs that we can have Kendall run for us. That's what happened with Belonging. One of the first questions we said are, we need to run this by race immediately, and some of the others, we need to run these by gender, we need to run these by class. That's why you see a lot of them by ninth, 10th, 11th, 12th. That's how the colorful slides that she mentioned, that Kelly Reed put together for her, that's how those were generated. So we're going to continue that process. We aren't done with this presentation, is not the end of it. It's something that we continue to look at, and we do refer to all throughout the two years before the next survey. So it's sort of a living document that we can always refer to. And so, again, it is thanks to Kendall that we are able to do that, because, as she mentioned, that we don't have access to the raw data, we do not get the survey results ourself, we cannot manipulate them in that way because it is anonymous and it is secured. And so we're so thankful for that collaboration. Hopefully, it will continue. You can see that it provides very robust data for us to consider when planning our education and our resources and diverting our funding. It's very important for that planning.
Well, this presentation that was just shown, will that be in our packets or documents or can we get at it?
We can forward that to you, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, of course.
I didn't know, put it on the, you know, like, just so we can go to our Google thing.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
You don't have to, like, print it out or anything, just.
No, that's okay. We'll put it in your drive. No problem.
I think it's also important to note, a lot of the connections and programming that we have are through grant funding opportunities. Our principals and a lot of our guidance and therapeutic staff work closely with Sarah's Village, and we met with them twice over the last week. We actually took some of the data points that we learned about, especially the Belonging data at the middle school. You can see that Principal Carol had talked about the affinity group that will be added at the, at the middle school, and that is something that Sarah's Village is supporting us on, based on some of the data points that we shared from the survey, and also some of the programming that we're adjusting district-wide, some of the opportunities for our sixth-grade students, our eighth-grade students, and we're actually bringing programming down to our elementary schools through Sarah's Village for the shift, based on some of the data points. So hopefully, we can see some change in about two years with some of these changes within the grant usage. So we're excited for Sarah's Village to continue that partnership with Eastern Public Schools.
And of course, Craig Davidson ran the committee, and we want to thank him for his organization of that. It was extremely helpful, and you can see he's jumping right into the district work, as you're hearing me say his name many times. So thank you for your work on that.
So next item on the agenda is the introduction of the Director of Human Resources.
Okay. Well, you can come join me, sure. I liked. So I would like to take the opportunity to introduce you to Christina Denapoli. As you know, the Human Resources Director position is a relatively new one in the district, and we have a lot of work to develop and do in that regard. We had a robust process of screening run by Director Davidson. And so we thank him for his work. We thank all of the screening committee members, they did a great job. We had fabulous candidates, and I would just like to highlight a little bit about Ms. Denapoli's experience. So she has been an administrative assistant for the Eastern Public, excuse me, the Stoughton Public Schools, as well as the By County Collaborative. She was there while I was on the board. We didn't have a lot of opportunity to meet together, but knowing the two executive directors she worked with so well, I was able to reach out to them and have very robust conversations about her qualifications, and clearly, they were glowing. I highlight those two positions because they were in a school setting, and so there was a lot of experience gleaned from that, as well as her most recent experience as a Human Resources Director in a private school. And so we went through a process. We have a rigorous progress, process here at Easton, so I want to also thank all the candidates, especially the finalists, who spent time with us, one who flew in from out of state. And we had staff members and community members ask questions, join them, we had site visits. Of course, I had my final interview with all of the candidates, and I am very pleased to say that we are 100% confident that we have the perfect candidate as a fit for the Eastern Public Schools. She's beginning next week. I couldn't be more thrilled about that, as the interim HR director right now for the Eastern Public Schools. It is increasingly more difficult with, as you're, if you're a member of any business organization, you may know that Human Resources encompasses a lot of things, from changing laws frequently and regulations and supports. All of our employees, we have 607 employees, all of our benefits, retirement, they're very complex and can be scary for people, our onboarding, our recruitment, our retention, support services for staff, counseling programs, interventions, any investigations. I could go on and on, and I am happy to hand that over to the competent and trained hands. She's educated as a Human Resources professional, to Christina Denapoli, that I proudly represent and introduce to the Eastern Public School community. I don't know if you'd like to say a few words?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for that introduction. That was wonderful. I've been in education for 2000, since 2006, and I started in the classroom as a paraprofessional, and I appreciate everything an educator does for everybody who works in a school. And we're all educators, and it doesn't matter what your title is. And I'm so excited, so excited to join the team here. I don't only, not only live here, but I, I'm part of the finance committee here, and I volunteer here, and this is my community, too. And to be part of this and to share a similar philosophy as Dr. Cabral, I'm just so excited. So I'm pulling up my sleeves, I want to get to know everybody, and please, I don't know where my office is yet, but next week I will know, come in, say hi. I will be at every school, and I'm just excited to be here. So I look forward to it.
Sadly for Easton, they will be losing a finance committee member, but we are very excited to welcome her, welcome you to the team.
Thank you, very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, and welcome. We're excited to have you.
Thank you.
Before we move on, just any, any questions or comments for?
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Were you told that it's mandatory to be at every school committee meeting?
No, are you telling me now?
We just want company. This is, like, really exciting to have people here with us.
I do love to talk about human resources.
Just be in our audience.
Didn't have my mic on. So next up on the agenda is MCAS presentation. So Dr. Cabral?
Okay. So MCAS is the standardized testing in Massachusetts. It takes place from grades three through 10, with, of course, the high-stakes testing, meaning graduation requirement on the grade 10 testing. We have ELA, mathematics and science exams in Easton, and Assistant Superintendent Chrissy Pruitt.
Pruitt this evening is going to be presenting this overall data with Principal Getchel of Richardson Olmsted, Principal Carroll of Easton Middle School and Principal Kavanaugh from Oliver Ames.
Thank you so much for providing us with this opportunity. It is, I know it calls for a very long night to have two presentations back to back, but I do want to highlight that I think it is very appropriate to now be talking about student achievement on the, on the tail of the presentation for the youth health, the youth health survey. One thing as an educator that we're always focusing on is really understanding the whole child and how every part of how we, how we work and support students really focuses on, on targeting the whole child, obviously for high achievement that we're, that we're looking for. So our presentation tonight, I have Chris Getchel, Luke Carroll and Kelly Kavanaugh with me. We will be presenting a little bit differently today. We are going to be presenting more of an overview of district data rather than getting into every, every school, rather than getting into the, the individual outcomes of every school. We think that it's really important that we look at data and continue to look at data from, from a district perspective while at their schools, they do do more in-depth work, but sharing with the community today, really understanding the PK to 12 efforts that it takes in order to, to create the, the student achievement that we, that we create. So in our presentation tonight, we're going to be looking at just some summary notes, some MCAS summary notes, some updates from the state, district accountability information, and then we're going to be looking at, you know, our MCAS results, the 2022, 2023 MCAS results, including comparison data and subgroups, and then talking about the path forward. You know, we should be getting through one, the agenda items one, two and three pretty quickly because really the meat of our presentation is through our discussion of, of our moving forward and our path forward. So for the MCAS summary, I just want to touch upon that what the state has noted and that the data, the 2023 data has indicated that the, that the achievement slide from 2019 has halted and recovery is underway. It's important that as we look at the data, you will see throughout our presentation that we are going to be comparing our data consistently to 2019's data. If you look here, you'll, you will be reminded of when tests were administered and when they were not. So in 2019, we had full test administration, that was right before COVID. Then 2020, when our schools shut down, no tests were administered. And then 2021, we had in grades three through eight, it was a partial administration and in grade 10, a full administration. Last year was our first year back at full administration across all grades. And then this year, having our, the second year of full implementation, we can really use some of that data comparatively and think about how are we progressing? As you know, our data across the state has declined drastically from 2019 and so setting those marks where we are actually looking at where we fall in comparison to our 2019 data. Most districts are not at that mark yet. They have not reached the 2019 data benchmarks yet, but we'll get into that a little bit as we, as we go on. So the district accountability information, so these are, there are actually five different indicators that play into district accountability. All schools receive an overall accountability classification that describes the need for assistance or intervention and all of these are taken into account. The first being achievement, they also, they also look at student growth, high school completion, English language proficiency and additional indicator, indicators to in particular chronic absenteeism and AP course completion. So we're going to be looking right now at our overall performance relative to other schools that serve similar grades. So you'll see the progress that our schools have made from last year to this year. Last year, we, we are, so at Richardson Olmsted, we're 72%. We, that means that we are actually performing better than 72% of schools in that classification for the grades, the same classification with the grade three through five. Eastern Middle School, we improved two points, so we are at 78% of achievement. We're performing better than 78% of schools, middle schools within the, within the state, the Commonwealth. And at the high school, we've improved by 4%. So we are now 59% where we are achieving higher than, than relative schools. Progress toward, I'm sorry, progress towards improvement targets, this is really important because each year they set targets for us to meet and we are at 63% of meeting or, meeting or exceeding targets, which puts us overall in substantial progress toward our targets, which is fantastic. This means that our targets, we are starting to close that gap in 2009, from 2019 and we are, hopefully, if we continue on this path, we will be back to the 2019 data as we were, as we are, as what our goals are going to be. So I just want to highlight this because there is a change in our, in reporting that is coming. So chronic absenteeism is a, it is a, a huge issue that continues throughout the state. We currently, Massachusetts has a little, just a slight percentage points lower than 25% of students that are considered chronically absent. Chronically absent means that it's the, you are missing 10% or more of days in membership. So what that means is how many days from the, your very first start date, start date. So say for example, I moved to Massachusetts and started in February, that would be my start date, okay? But most of our students are the, their date of membership is their first, the first day of school. So current, so from, from last year's data, our, our chronic absenteeism has actually declined from the previous year in all schools except Blanche James, which I'll talk about in a second. But we are still above where we were in 2019, which you'll see at the bottom there, so school year 19 to school year 23. But all three of our Richardson Olmsted, the middle school and the high school all made great gains in improving chronic absenteeism, which is fantastic. I want, I want to specifically point out Blanche James because that does include the preschool and kindergarten grades and those are non-compulsory. So those particular, that data is, if, if we wanted to look at a really accurate account for what is actually considered an accountability, it's grades one through 12, not PK through 12. So in our accountability data, how it relates to the accountability that we have in our, for our district, kindergarten, preschool and kindergarten are not part of that. However, if we pull out that data here, we can see that Blanche James has increased a little bit from last year, point, seven tenths of a, of a percentage point.
Just a question on the other schools. I assume we included kids who were out for COVID?
Yep.
In the 2022 numbers. So some of the decline is because we no longer have the same quarantine periods and all of that, I assume.
Yeah. This is all absences, excused, unexcused, regardless. This, this does take into account all absences, yes. But I also want to point out that there were some efforts as well to ensure that our students were attending and were, were there, that, yeah, there were efforts that our, that our students were attending. Okay. So now we get into the MCAS analysis and this is where our principals are going to, are going to jump in. Just so you know, as, as Dr. Cabral stated before, that this really is a tool that offers comprehensive approach to evaluating student performance and it provides an opportunity to delve into detailed analytics and provide insights into areas of strengths and areas of improvement. Like I said before, this is going to be an overall view of the data, really more of a bird's eye view, but at each school and in fact this week, this and last week and this week, we have been attending data meetings throughout all of the schools, really looking at diving deeper into the data. You'll also, it'll also, I'm sure Chris and Luke will talk about it, but we have been seeing significant gains already this year with the, with the data that we've been receiving, especially at our winter benchmarks. But this again, just moving on to the next slide, I'll turn it over to Chris, Principal Getchel.
Chrissy, Principal Getchel, Principal of Richardson Olmsted School. I'm going to talk a little bit about the ELA. I'll just reiterate what Chrissy had said. The MCAS is just one of many tools we use to gauge our students' progress. We know that our students have many ways of showing what they know. We are all diverse learners, so we certainly don't put all of our eggs into this basket in these public schools. I'm going to be presenting ELA grades three through 10 and I think that alone, this difference in how we present MCAS data is a step in and of itself in our improvement as a district. We really want to go and closing gaps because I feel like now more than ever, we're thinking more systematically as a district, we're working more collaboratively pre-K through 12. And as we think about teaching and learning, it is, we are thinking about the student's journey from pre-K through 12, not just in silos of our school. And I think the more we do that, the better our numbers will become.
I'm just going to punctuate that point for a second because for people that haven't been here or new school committee members that are joining us, how we have presented in this past, this data in the past, Principal Getchel would report on grade three to five data only for ELA, math and science. The middle school report only on the middle school, Principal Kavanaugh only on the high school. What Chris was describing, and he described very well, for people who knew that part of it, is that we're looking at a more systematic approach. It's very important for the principals to work together to analyze and disseminate the information, to understand any trends, any anomalies, any progressions, any deviations, and have a systematic viewpoint of how they might be able to work to assist students in closing their achievement caps. I'm sorry.
So we'll take a look at our last spring's ELA MCAS data. You can see we are in the, we're the orange bars, the state averages, the blue bars. You can see that we are outperforming the state by over 10 percentage points, but we certainly are not satisfied with those numbers. We have room to grow and we'll talk a little bit about how we're doing that. So next slide. So as Chrissy said, we are really using pre-pandemic numbers as a, as a benchmark to help close that gap created by the loss of school for our kids. So you can see, just want to highlight the green column. Since 2022, we are in the green, which is we've increased at each grade level, grades three through eight in ELA since the previous MCAS. So this is showing that in every grade level in ELA, we are starting to close the gap from where we were in 2019. Those are percentages of kids that are meeting or exceeding benchmarks on MCAS ELA. This is a look at our subgroup data and you can see here that state averages on the far left. If you look across there, our lowest performing subgroup continues to be students with disabilities and it is lowest by quite some margin, I think over 10, 10% lower than any other subgroup. So this is certainly a target of our, our school improvement as a district, how we can connect better with students with disabilities and provide multiple ways of showing what, what you know and provide multiple access points to grade level standards for those kids in an inclusive environment.
Before you move on, I just want to point out in grade 10, you'll see some of the bars missing and that's because that is one grade that's tested and reported out. So you, we don't have enough students that, that fulfill what they quantify as a subgroup.
But we had them in three through eight?
Because it's three, it's grades three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
So that, that bar is?
Is all, it's, is.
All three through eight? They didn't just fly out of the system. They're there.
No, it's multiple.
There's just not enough.
They're in grades three to eight now. They're not in grade, they weren't in grade ten.
Last year.
Last year. They weren't in.
So we didn't have any of those three?
We did, but not enough to create a subgroup.
Okay.
What, what is it?
It's, it's around 10 to 12 that quantifies a subgroup. And if you're, if you're reporting out grade, results from only one grade, there might not be enough students that make up a subgroup to report out. Because then it becomes identifiable and so that's why they won't report out small subgroups.
Thank you.
Chrissy, can I ask a question?
Sure.
There was a, on the second graph, there was a students with disabilities and then there was a high needs student?
Yes.
What's the difference between those two?
High needs encompasses most of these, most of the, high needs encompasses students with disabilities, low income, EL, it's all of, all of the students.
All three indicators.
It's all three indicators, yes.
Good question. I'm going to turn it over to Luke.
Can I just ask a quick question? On the, the students with disabilities, do we have a state measure on that? Like how are we comparing to the state?
We do have a measure, I just don't have it listed here, but I'll, I'll get that.
I was just curious if we were above or below the state because obviously it's a tough population. So how are we performing comparatively?
Okay, Mr. Carroll?
So this is, this is the district math scores, 10th grade and the three through eight, which is obviously the middle school and our row combined. I wander, so I should keep moving on here. So, I mean, when you look at MCAS scores, ultimately you're talking about combining the meeting expectations and exceeding expectations and you're looking ultimately at that number. Because, you know, every year, even if you do really well, the target is going to move. So if you have great MCAS scores, the bar is going to get raised. If you have low MCAS scores, the bar is still raising. So it's always going to move. Ultimately, what the state wants is they want everybody to have 100% meeting and exceeding expectations, as do we. So as you take a look at this, although this isn't the combined score, our meeting and exceeding expectations or our groups right here are compared to the state. Now I've always said in the MCAS data meetings, if you're not at least 10 points above the state, you're doing something wrong. If we, if I see a curriculum point or an area that we're at a plus nine or something like that, that's a point that we want to go back and make sure we're addressing in the curriculum when we pull the data. In this case, as you take a look at these numbers, we're about 20, almost, it's 19 and 20% above the state averages. So that's pretty good in my mind because I always look for that 10% as sort of the indicator. So as you look at the district math scores, they come in pretty well. And in those math scores too, it should also just be quickly noted that this is an improvement. So, you know, the, the three through eight grades, that's 59% combined, meeting and exceeding, that's up 5%. At the high school, I think it's 70%, that's up 1%. So that's an improvement based on last year's numbers. Excellent. So as you take a look at this slide, just, I feel like I should point to something just so everybody can see. So basically what you're looking at is these are the meeting and exceeding combined percentages in 2023. This is 2019 and how high we were at that point in time. So this column here that is mostly in green shows you the change since 2022, but ultimately we're still trying to get back to where those scores were in 2019 and this column reflects that. I will say, because, you know, you know, it's hard for me to not look at, you know, grade six math and say, okay, well, you know, why is it at minus 10 and why did it drop off from the year before? But if you go back, don't forget, these numbers are. But if you go back, don't forget, these numbers are specific groups of kids, a different group of kid from year to year. So when I go back and I look at this sixth grade group, how were they performing when they were in fifth grade? Well, they were at 46% or 49% meeting and exceeding. So actually, although you look at the red and you say, well, they really struggled, they actually gained quite a bit compared to how they scored in fifth grade. And, you know, that group, you know, when some of the foundations of math would be laid, that's also, there was some interrupted learning for those kids. I think it was third grade for them, so, yeah, very difficult. But, and as, you know, very similar data to what you saw with Chris and probably similar things to what you've heard me say in years past, the focus is really, you know, on the special education students. They're the students that are, that are really struggling. You can see with, you know, 22% meeting and exceeding, three through eight, and 21% in grade 10, that's a concerning number. I will tell you though, if you go back and you look at this data, that 21 is up, I think, 6% from the year before and that 22 is up 3% from the year before. So there's still positives to take out of, you know, those areas of focus, but certainly our special education students are going to be a priority. They have been a priority and they're going to continue to be a priority moving forward.
So I just want to highlight, Craig just was able to pull the state subgroup data as well to answer your question. Do you want to share for ELA and math?
Of course. So for ELA and math, just grade three through eight for math right now. For the state with disabilities, we are at 22%. State is at 12%. For high school, we are at 21%. Grade 10, the state is 15%. ELA EPS for three through eight is at 21%. State is at 12%. Grade 10 for ELA, we are at 26%. State is at 20%.
Thank you.
I will speak to science and technology. You're going to see very similar, and here in the last few slides. So as you can see, the science, technology and engineering exams came into fifth, eighth and 10th grades. And are, we continue to be similar to the other areas where we're about 10 percentage points higher than the state average in meeting and exceeding expectations.
Can I, can I just ask a question? Isn't grade nine the one that takes science?
Oh, it's grade nine. You're right. It should say grade nine.
Well.
Well, doesn't it?
DESI identifies it as grade 10.
Because, because some towns, right.
You have a choice of grade nine physics or grade 10 biology.
But in Easton, grade nine takes science.
In Easton, we take the physics test in grade nine. The state still identifies it as grade 10.
Thank you.
Yep.
And this is our change over time as Principal Carroll just explained, you know, our goal is to get these numbers on the far right side to be zero and for us to get to the point where we were in 2019 and we continue to make progress in that area. And again, we see that struggle in that, in that grade five right now, which is that grade level that we feel like some of those foundational skills were missed during COVID, but yet they continue to make progress every year.
One thing to note on the grade five is that the math, I mean, sorry, the science MCAS is obviously, it tests all grades. And so if they miss certain years for, due to COVID, these are the gaps that are, that we're seeing. And that is why this particular grade was started COVID in second grade. So these were instrumental years that they may have missed some science instruction. And we'll talk about what that looks like moving forward and in the plans that we're, what we're doing in the, in the schools, student Polish. And I also want to point.
Sorry, can I take a little?
Yeah. I just want to point out, the last thing on this slide is that in 2022, the physics and bio impact for tempers was switched from legacy to next generation, which is a different scoring tool. So you can't compare that data, which is why we don't have the comparison.
Mrs. Port, were you going to say something?
Oh, I just wanted to throw in, you know, when you look at like the fifth grade scores and the eighth grade scores, and we have gone deep into the curriculum to find out where kids really struggle with questions. And I can definitively tell you that, you know, when we're testing in grade eight, they're being assessed on what they learned in grade six, seven and grade eight. Where, when we look at the numbers, the kids are struggling the most is the stuff they missed when they were in grade six. And I would imagine if you look at the grade five data, you're going to find the exact same thing. It's the foundational piece that they missed in grade three that they were never taught. And we see from the curriculum data that that is our biggest problem. But this is the last year that we'll have that type of problem with this group of kids. So we have pretty good hope about the, the science of reading scores.
And once again, similar data, although I'm sure Craig could share that it's, it's going to be a higher percentage than this, than the state average, but our subgroups for our students with special needs continue to be an area of focus of us and looking at our instructional practices in order to help them.
Students with disabilities, grades three through eight, are meeting or exceeding 24% of the time. The state is 15%. I do believe our data is a little bit misleading at grade 10, science and technology. It's 13% for us, 16% for the state. But a key point I do want to reply to is the state level, not meeting expectations is 31%. Ours is only 9%. So 79% of our students with disabilities are partially meeting.
Which actually allows them to pass the MCAS.
Yes.
The big discrepancy there.
Or graduation requirements.
I was going to ask about that.
Yeah.
Thank you. So path forward. So where, what are we doing now? What are the current practices so all of students can succeed? We're going to focus in on more specific areas, literacy, math, science and special education, obviously literacy, math, science, because those are what is assessed right now, but also to talk to you a little bit about special education. Sorry, that picture in the last, should, should be a different picture, but that's, yeah. So I just want to point out that everything that we do always relates back to our strategic plan. So when, when you look at the initiatives and what is in place currently in our schools, we are always tying it back to our strategic plan. This is just, just a reminder, I know all of you know, but for the large public that's watching, our strategic plan is up this year and we are currently in the process of, of building our new strategic plan, which will take place for, for the next school year.
Okay, we're going to talk about some, I think, significant literacy initiatives that we were taking on K through 12, pre-K through 12, to continue to help move our students forward. So next slide. Those were it, so, sorry. Those windows are throwing me off a little bit. Okay. The first is a full embrace of the extensive research around the science of reading, how kids learn to read best. And that is, that translates, and I want to kind of dip into a few buckets at once here, into a, a significant increase in phonics, phonics instruction, particularly pre-K through grade three, whereas now in Eastern public schools, every student in kindergarten through grades three, every student receives 30 minutes of systematic phonics every day in school. We call that tier one instruction. Tier one is the instruction that all students receive every day. And that program we're using called Wilson Foundations, I've had the privilege of walking through very recently, as of last week, kindergarten, first, second, and I walk through third grade every day. The consistency of that program is phenomenal. Our kids are getting very similar experiences, a very gradual build, increase in phonics K through three. And Principal Cedebaum informed me this week that preschool will be starting Wilson Foundations as well soon. So we really are thinking systematically and that's not just good for teaching, it's really good for kids because when kids go through our system, it's not like they're learning, they're, they're, they're learning very similar practices and even when they change schools, the key effective practices aren't changing. That's really exciting and we're seeing some really great results from that. Science of reading, so intervention is at pre, K through five. We are now protecting what we call tier one instruction blocks in our schedules so that all students, all students are in the classroom for 90 minutes of ELA a day. Might get broken up depending on the grade level, but it's 90 minutes of ELA at least a day and 60 minutes of math uninterrupted. So, so even if I'm a student that is on an IEP and need to, need a special service, I am included, I'm, I'm accessing my grade level standard with my peers every day in core instruction and all, any intervention that I might need to close the gap or special service to meet my needs is happening outside of that tier one block. It takes a lot of planning and coordination amongst the entire staff. We are doing that every single day, K through five and into the middle school. So that is a way in terms of reaching and helping our students in that students with disability subgroup, not pulling them out of core instruction to give them a replacement service, but giving them, giving them very targeted instruction in addition to the grade level standards. We're not lowering the grade level standards for students just because they learn differently or are, or are not on IEP. That is a significant shift for us and I feel like that's, that is going to really pay dividends as we move down the road. Okay, in terms of personnel, we've added a reading specialist at all grades high school. We continue to work very closely with our reading interventionists and reading specialists K through eight. We have a number of assessments we use beyond MCAS to really check the progress of our students as we go. I know at the primary grades, they use DIBELS and a lot of phonemic awareness assessments all throughout the year, done individually with kids to assess progress. So if students are not making progress, we're shifting the intervention, looking at our data to, to give students what they need. So that, that progress monitoring to me is the most important kind of assessment that we have and we are increasing our efforts there. Planning time, really focusing, especially with common planning between classroom teachers and special ed teachers and interventionists. Not necessarily, although it is important, an entire grade level planning, but really getting the, the professionals that work with the students, work with the same students together to talk about those specific students. That kind of common planning is what we're really targeting. And I talked about the schedule about protecting tier one instruction for all. We've also adopted a new literacy program called Witten Wisdom, K through seven. And that implement, we are in our first full year of information, implementation. That program is based on the science of reading. I can tell you that our teachers and our students have worked extremely hard in planning and prepping these lessons every day. We are seeing very strong gains already midway through the year with the use of that program. And I'm looking forward to next fall when we see some data that shows the results from that first year of implementation.
I may have teared up a little bit over some of the data. I, I do want to highlight though, something as Luke walks up to, to get ready to talk, highlight something that Chris said, how he had walked through Land James and the K or two classrooms. This is something that we are, that our administrators in each building are doing this year that's different is they are going and doing learning walks with each other and seeing what's happening in each school. And I just, Alicia and I are removed from that. They're having their own time together to kind of, you know, really ask each other questions and, and, and get to know each other's buildings. And the feedback that we've gotten has been phenomenal, just really seeing some, a lot of the consistencies that are going on. And it's great because I was just at a data meeting with Chris and he was able to articulate that to his teachers. Keep doing what you're doing. It's happening at Land. They're coming. And Luke and Kelly are able to reiterate that with their teachers as well.
So in mathematics, as we're sort of looking, looking forward to the, to the future and it's from a district perspective, like I said, and if, feel free Kelly or Chris to correct me if I, as I jump around to the different buildings, but I feel like because I've been going into the other schools, I'm sort of an expert on what they have going on, but I'm not. But ultimately, you know, and I'm not going to stay bucket to bucket in order, but obviously there's a thriving intervention program taking place at Chris's school, at the middle school. We have interventionists, we work with the kids. At the middle school level, we do it a little bit different where we're, we're identifying the kids based on the data, based on the progress monitoring, based on MCAS scores, based on STAR assessment data. We're identifying those kids that are the neediest kids and we're trying to address that for them. Those are the kids that we target for intervention and during our focus period, the kids that we target for the intervention during focus period are the greatest priority. But we also have another group of kids that we began addressing also during focus period and those are kids that might need math remediation. So they may not be kids that need intervention where we're going back and backfilling stuff, but kids that need more support on the current curriculum and what's currently happening. So we're working with two different groups of math kids that are struggling during focus period, one with our math teachers and one with our interventionists. And we're doing that in sixth, seventh and eighth grade. At RRO, their intervention program, and it is a program, it's, it's built around building number sense, it's built around a productive struggle for students and around problem solving. And we have a very similar program for our mathematics program because we use illustrative math and a lot of that is the same, where students need to struggle and work through. And we've had great success in sixth and seventh grade. And now for the first year, based on our data in eighth grade with that program, as we wrapped in some DESMOs math, which is using the same system, but in eighth grade. So as I said, we, we currently use STAR assessment data to try, track the kids, to track their progress. We do that three times a year. We have data meetings as well and which we sit down with all the grade level departments and go through this data, whether it's MCAS data or the STAR data. One thing I will tell you, we realize is, and we, you know, and it has shown that the STAR data actually correlates really well with MCAS. And that's something that is important because we're ultimately want to impact those, you know, the MCAS scores, but the STAR data helps give us an accurate idea of what is a, ultimately a predictor.
Can I interrupt you for a second? Sorry. STAR data. So I've, I've recently heard a lot about STAR testing. So is, is that a, a progress point that the kids know that they are, are getting tested and getting assessed or?
Yeah, yeah. We, we test the whole grade level on the same day during focus period. It doesn't take very long. Kids just use their own Chromebook. They log in, they have an account, they do the assessment and then we generate the data.
Yeah, so STAR data, it's an adaptive assessment. So if I, if I start the test and I get a question right, it brings me to one question. If I get it wrong, it brings me to a different question. And it maxes out after a certain amount of time, but it's a very short period of time. It's about 20 minutes typically for a child to take a STAR assessment. And we, we give it to the, the students three times a year. Really, we get a, we get a initial screening, we get the, in the fall, we get the winter data and then we get the spring data. And in between, for certain students, we progress monitor. And this is done in grades three through eight. We have a sprinkling of some kids using it in the, in the high school, but not so much. It's more focused on three through eight. And then at the primary grades at K through two, we're only, we're only assessing, using a screener from, for English, for literacy right now. We're not, we don't have it for math yet.
Okay.
So, but it is something that we, we do, the kids know about it. And we really do dive deeply into it. There are so many different ways to look at the data. We actually had a demo today for utilizing it in some other areas as well.
Great.
So, and it also aligns, it can tell you specifically what standards a student may be struggling with. However, it's, we have to take into consideration other assessments because it's just one indicator.
Okay. Thank you so much.
And we also, so we, to, to really put it into layman's terms, we kind of look at the screeners as physicals, where the MCAS is more of an autopsy. It's sort of after it's over and the student has actually left the school or left the grade. And so we're able to make adjustments along the way with students when you're using them periodically throughout the year.
Good.
Strange example, but it works.
Additionally, we're, we're obviously, you know, we're always working and we continue to work on units. That's in all levels. We're producing common assessments as well, all levels. We're continuing to align, align in the standards. We have teachers meeting with each other to sort of address those issues. So that's something that's always ongoing. Every level does it a little bit different based on what they can or can't provide for common planning time for the teachers, but it's, it's something that's always ongoing.
As far as the unit writing goes, there was a hiatus of unit writing during the pandemic, as you know, as you can imagine, because we had to. as you know, as you can imagine, because we had to completely shift the way that we educate children. And so last year, I, I think of it as more like a recovery year and this year we are getting back on track. We, actually at the end of last year and this year, we're, we're really getting back on track. And our goal obviously is to have all of stage ones published for, for families under the curriculum website, the curriculum portion of our website, so that you know what unit of your child might be in, as well as what essential questions or what standards they'll be looking at and what knowledge and skills they'll need to know as well. More to come.
It also should be noted too that it plays an important role in math. We've also added more support and more staffing for our multi-language learners. And at the high school, things like that show in a multi-language learner math class that takes place. And we've had more support for our students this year at our level too with a full-time person for the first time. So we expect that that's going to make a big difference with that population because when you do look at the subgroups, that population is significantly struggling and significantly growing. I think, I, I was trying to understand the subgroup data on that one and like ultimately, you know, you're looking at, you know, like a one-year period. The group I was looking at went from 12 students to 25 students in one year. And so, you know, it's certainly an area that we focus on and we want to continue to focus on in math. And we're looking forward to the Math Acceleration Academy, which is coming up, which is math instruction during February vacation and April vacation. And we're hoping the kids are really super excited about being at school during school vacation.
Thank you. Thank you Director Davidson for submitting and securing that grant.
Okay, so I'm going to talk about science where we are. So you're going to see some of similar common themes, for example, using common assessments in order to have systemic data. Common systems are 100% the same across all students. Doesn't vary based on the teacher, what they've covered or anything. It gives us really solid data on student performance across different, of course, at the high school, different levels and different courses, different teachers. We continue to increase our personnel and support for our MLs. And Principal Getchell, please jump in if I miss anything here, but you know, we have the No Adam programming for science at K to twelve, K to five, which has been going really well. And this includes the CHAMPs program, which teachers, observed teachers teaching science. It's, and one of the best PD you can give teachers is to have them spend time with each other and work together to develop their own skills as educators. Nope. You're going to see the same note that we have in most of these, which is schedule protecting the tier one instruction. And if you go to the next slide, I think it talks about special ed. So that's, and Principal Getchell talked a lot about this, so I'm not going to go into it again, but I just want to name that research shows that the best way for students to make substantial progress is to put them in front of a highly qualified teachers, teaching the core content with the, with the standards and not being pulled out of class, right? And you need that, they need to be exposed to that. And we're doing that more and more every day in Easton. And that includes by adding additional co-teaching and different additional support that allows students to find success in general education classrooms with their peers. We have increased our coordinators, so every single school has a special education coordinator now who can oversee the instruction, the development of our IEPs and making sure that we have consistent practices that, again, are aligning vertically pre-K to 12. We continue to use these diagnostic screeners, which we've mentioned. And at the high school level, although we don't have STAR assessment, when students are identified in eighth grade as needing additional support, the STAR assessment can travel with them and we can give them additional supports at the high school level. And then we've also increased planning time, particularly at RO with special education teachers and general education teachers. At the high school, we've started to create common planning time for the teachers who teach sub-separate English and math with the department heads of those, of those course, of those content areas, so that they're making sure that they're meeting the same standards as the students in the general education classrooms, but with more additional modifications to the curriculum.
The last thing I just want to share with you before we wrap up is that we are also implementing at a very intense level, our district curriculum accommodation plan, which is, the acronym is a D cap. So you'll hear people talk about D cap, D C A P. And I did not put that in, I did not include that in this presentation, but it is, it is a list of general accommodations that any child can have regardless of whether they have a disability or not, to access the curriculum. So it could be anything from frequent breaks. It could be anything from, you know, a reduced number of, of, as, problems on a page. It could be utilizing different colors. So there's, there's various things that, that we are ensuring that all students can receive, that a copy of the D cap is in on our, on our district website. So please feel free to take a look at it, but it is a mass general law that every district have an active D cap. And last spring, a group of educators came together, we developed the, the D cap, we revamped it actually because we've had one before, but we're really going on a schoolwide tour to ensure its use. And that will also be weaved into our student, our, our sit process, which is our indicator, our pre-referral process for special education, as well as any, any other, our data meetings and all that.
I could add, I mean, I think it's understandable, sort of this guided belief out there for people that don't work in schools that if your student is struggling, they, they need some extra help to, to close the gap and they need some combination that can only be given to that child on a 504 or an IEP. That's not true. So the D cap, like Chrissy said, includes hundreds of accommodations that, that should by law be given to all kids to help them close the gap. We have to better educate, I think, our, our families and our, our entire district about those accommodations because the path to getting the student what they need, close the gap, is not always special ed or 504 plan. There are, there are, there's not a necessary document that you need, they're not sort of like a parent's, I swear, a call of insurance policies. We have legal binding accommodations that all kids should get if they're struggling. So Chrissy's on a point with, playing for D cap, but we put a lot of effort into this rate on developing this and making it more active, more active document to help kids in our district.
For a parent or guardian who feels strongly that their student should be on a 504 or an IEP, how can they be reassured that these practices are happening in their classrooms?
The D cap ones?
Yes.
Is the D cap on the website yet?
It should be, if it's not.
If it's not, yeah, I want to make sure we get it actually under the parent tab because parents have really got in great education about IEPs and 504s. And so they are asking very specific questions. I can't say that we've done as well of a job with the D cap. And so that's what the effort is now, is to try to make it as accessible to everyone as all of our other resources through special education or a 504 plan. So that a parent, if they are questioning whether or not their child needs an accommodation, they can now have the same verbiage that an educator would have. Is my student getting preferential seating? Is my child getting X, Y, Z? Because they can actually use the D cap and it names and describes all of the accommodations that are available for students in a classroom setting. And so they can very easily articulate that and understand that from when the teacher's explaining what modifications they may be using in a classroom by use of that document.
And it also helps knowing that, like Dr. Caroll just said, knowing that language because as a parent, you may know a, a certain accommodation that might work for your child and being able to articulate that to the teacher, to point that accommodation out that's in the D cap, to say, you know, I know that my child really just gets nervous about, about word problems. Can you read, in math, can you read that problem to, to my child? It's noted in the D cap, but it is something that, that can be done because it's not a test of reading, it's a test of math, right? So that's just an example. So this is.
The other thing is kids, kids are constantly growing and developing. And so, because they're human, that's what we do. So, so soon to be combinations that we, you know, a combination I needed in third grade to be successful in math is going to be different in sixth grade, for sure. And so, no, too, to create this false narrative of, oh, just because I've got this paper that has this accommodation on it, you've got to do this. Well, it also depends on what your kid needs at that time. Your kids do change. So I think we've got to just educate our parents and our staff about all the accommodations because they are, they are toolboxes that can and should be used as the.
And it also teaches our kids how to advocate for themselves.
Right.
And because we all have accommodations that we have, we self-advocate for. You know, we, we will get up in the middle of a meeting because we need to stand up or we need, you know, we, we all have these accommodations and the D cap is put in place in order to assist our students in learning how to advocate for themselves and learning which accommodations they, they work well for them at particular times.
Any other questions?
I have, let's see, a couple. So this is for Mr. Getchell and it's not actually related to MCAS, but it, as you were going through some of the literacy kind of next steps in particular, it just prompted a question. How is the distribution of students on IEPs and 504s within RO in terms of concentration within classes? Are we at a point where it's fairly, they're fairly evenly distributed or do you still have clusters where some teachers have a higher percentage of students in their class with higher needs versus others?
We continue to work very hard at making sure our classrooms are heterogeneous.
Yeah.
There are many subgroups, right, that aren't just students on IEPs or 504s, like multilingual learners, for example. There are some classes that have, the student on IEPs, for example, are evenly distributed through the majority of a grade level, but there may be a few classrooms, we have 11 sections, let's say, in fourth grade. There may be a few of those fourth grade that have other subgroups in it because there are certain staff with certain expertise that if I'm a multilingual teacher, for example, I cannot get to all 11 fourth grade classrooms in a day and adequately service those kids if I sprinkle those multilingual kids throughout.
Gotcha. Okay.
But if those multilingual kids are in two classes, now I'm teaming with those teachers and we have a much more concentrated service for those multilingual kids. We do the same for special education, even within special education, kids that have heavier speech and language needs versus educational or physical therapy needs might be clustered so that those particular teachers can better service those kids. We have big schools, we have to think very strategically in terms of, we want, what we, what really works for kids is when the grownups that work with them are all working together really closely every day.
Yep.
And the more we can, we can do that, the better, the better outcomes for kids.
And I want to assure everybody that, you know, if there was a large population, it isn't just one between two classes. You know, it would be, it would be, it would be more than that. You know, when Mr. Getchell used that example of two classes in particular, they don't envision just two classes sharing, you know, a, a special ed teacher or an ML teacher working with just two classes, they're working with multiple.
And legally, honestly, in terms of IEP, you cannot have more students on IEPs in a class than on IEPs.
Right.
So that does not happen.
Yep. Yeah, but I know, and predating your time as the leader of that, that age group in particular, I know, you know, one of my kids was in a class that was pretty close to half consistently from grade to grade because there were, there was just this kind of a history, we're talking many years ago at this point, of kind of clustering, you know, students with teachers who, who did great with certain types of students.
That definitely was a philosophy. I can say that was a, a little over a decade ago when I first came here. That has definitely been changed.
Yeah, great. Good to hear.
That is not the case since I've been here, which is seven years, so.
Marvel, okay.
Ended before I got here. Thank you.
Great. And we have a, a commenter question from Marvel.
I, I just have a quick question regarding, regarding the percentage of absences. Does that include excused absences?
Yes, it does. It's a scene of all.
Do you have a prediction of, of what it would be if it doesn't include excused absences?
The, the state does not, does not separate that data, so we would have to look at our absent, we would have to look at our student information system to tease that data out.
Okay.
But no, I mean, I, what the state is, is saying is that a direct correlation with student achievement is related to students actually being in the building, regardless of it's, of if it's excused or not. And so that's why they don't separate that data, that students achieve when they're in the building and so, and attending, attending school. So that's why the focus is really just on ensuring that, that our students are coming to school as often as possible.
And Marvel, that's an interesting question that you asked because the Commonwealth is really focusing on chronic absenteeism. And so a couple of the things that they're doing is changing the accountability system to reflect the emphasis they're putting on efforts of districts to get kids in school, whether it's excused absences or not. So for example, the accountability data you see here works in 5%, 5% of chronic absenteeism is weighted in our accountability status in 10th grade. Starting next year, it's going to increase to 20%. So 20% weight of our accountability status on MCAS is going to be absenteeism.
And then in grades one through eight, it is currently 10% and it's going up to 25%.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Good question, Marvel. Thank you.
Excellent question.
And then I have, it's probably a perennial question for those of you who've had me asking these questions before. Breakdown of performance by gender. I, is it, I think I took, I, you know, did a quick look. I imagine the same trend is still holding with girls outperforming boys in most areas, kind of closing the gap as we get through the grades, but in those younger grades, fairly good-sized gaps.
We just came out of the pandemic.
Yeah.
It was startling, tickling third grade. The girls were so far outperforming boys, particularly reading.
Yeah.
But that is close. I don't have the exact numbers.
Okay. Okay. And then just to reiterate, I think something that we probably talked about, it might have been with the school improvement plan or this conversation last year, I think is one of the, one of the objectives of using the science of reading, also including more, I think more nonfiction and, and, yeah.
Background knowledge is a huge determinant of reading success. The more background knowledge a student has in something, the more likely to be able to read about.
Yeah.
So, and we know kids, some kids who struggle with reading, reading kids with dyslexia, for example, the more, they might have a lot of content knowledge in outer space.
Right.
And the more we can deep that content, that's why our No Adam program is also based in science of reading. So those kids can learn about outer space and No Adam, bring that content knowledge to reading that increases their likelihood to feel successful at reading.
So we have, we have three cohorts of teachers in K through five that are participating in our CHAMPs. It's, it's actually not an acronym, they just call it CHAMPs, No Adam.
Okay.
Science professional development focused on teaching instruction in, in science. The, so our, one, two cohorts, one is K through two, the other is three through five. This is their first time being a part of this program. Like was stated before, they're going into each other's classrooms, they're observing, they're coming back, they're talking about things that they've noticed the kids doing and, and deciding teaching moves going forward. And we have another cohort that we actually started, and No Adam, I think, is going to start replicating it, we should have put a copy of it on it, is that those that participated, this is our third year doing this, this CHAMPs professional development, is this year we have a cohort of teachers that already participated and it's K through five. And so the teachers, for example, in kindergarten are seeing what's happening in fifth grade and vice versa in classrooms, which hasn't been done before.
Yeah.
And so these teachers are crossing schools, they're going, they're looking, they're watching the kids and they're seeing great gains. They're saying, oh my gosh, that, that routine that I teach in kindergarten or first grade, they're actually doing it in fifth grade and they're seeing the spiral of the curriculum as well. Because oftentimes our teachers will say, I have to teach this mastery, but the science curriculum in particular is a true spiral. And so they, they're, they're learning that they don't have to necessarily master the rain, the, the water system, but that, it, it, in kindergarten, it will come up again. up again in fifth grade and eighth grade and so forth and so on. And so it's, it's really been a great process for the teachers to, to participate in. The, also, the amount that they are relating to our science of reading and written wisdom is, is incredible. Um, we use a practice called Socratic dialogue in both programs. Um, they're, they're making connections, they're seeing it, and, um, you know, halfway through the year, we just led a team of teachers from Dedham through Richardson, Homestead to look at written wisdom in particular, and, um, they were blown away by the, the conversations the kids were having, um, the, 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 um, the high level of engagement, even though it appeared to be whole group instruction, how engaged all students were, and they kept saying to us, are you sure there's subgroups in this classroom? And we kept saying, yes. Um, they also were really interested in, in our focus on tier one instruction. So I have sent all of that to Dedham, um, so that they can see how we're, how we're utilizing the schedule to benefit kids, so.
Okay. That's all great.
I would love to answer if chairperson starts the question around fail versus people in two years.
Sure.
Um, math, for grades three through eight, unbelievable, like, uh, one percent difference in all four categories.
Great.
Um, so, you know, seven, six for not being, and then third, fourth, or fourth, twenty-nine is fail. Um, and then when it comes to ELA, it's within, within five to seven percentage points in all four categories.
Okay. That, yeah, that is, that does seem much closer than, yeah, those kind of yawning gaps that we've seen some years.
It is under fifteen, under twelve.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Great. Thank you. Any other questions from committee members? All right. Thank you all. That's such great information. Thank you. All right. So we can return to front of the room.
Uh-oh. You got dropped up. You lost your voice.
Thank you.
Oh, God. Thank you, principals. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All righty. So, on to some more administrative items. Um, next up on the agenda, we are voting to approve minutes from December 18th, 2023, and January 18th of 2024. So let's start with the December minutes. Um, and these are from the, um, the joint meeting that we had with the select board to appoint Kelly Persio, um, as our interim school committee member. So any questions or comments or edits on these minutes?
They look good to me, too. Okay. So I will make a motion to accept the minutes from the Monday, December 18th, 2023 School Committee Meeting. Can I get a second?
DeLuca, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Waisman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Persio, yes.
Okay. Great. And then second set of minutes is from, uh, our January 18th, 2024 meeting. Any questions, comments, or edits on these? So I head on. They look good to me. Anybody else?
I already sent my corrections in.
Yes. You were, thank you for doing that.
I'm, I'm channeling Caroline.
Okay. All righty then. So I'll make a motion then to accept the Thursday, January 18th School Committee Meeting minutes. Can I get a second?
Waisman, second.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Waisman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Persio, yes.
Great. Great. Okay. Um, schedule of payments. Since the committee last met, we have completed warrants 50 and 55 S. So thank you all for your continued prompt review and approval of those. Um, that whole docu-sign process seems to be going smoothly, so knock on wood. All right. Great. And then is Marvel still with us? Great. All right. So, um, we will have, Marvel, if you can, if you have access to audio, we'll take a
Yes.
committee update from the most dedicated, I'm going to just tee this up with saying that Marvel, um, is traveling back from a school, an out-of-state school event. So hopefully you can talk, uh, give a, a little bit about that, and we'll hopefully get a, maybe a little bit of a presentation, um, at a later meeting, which I think we did last year. But please go ahead, our most diligent student representative.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so this is going to be a little bit of a high school and middle school, um, focused update. So, but regarding sports entirely, um, winter sports, winter sports are starting to come to an end, um, with great seasons from everyone in both high school and middle school. Um, in the high school, Active Minds, which is a chapter that, um, revolves around mental health awareness, is holding a sports-affiliated game where they're going to partner with boys' basketball team, um, to bring awareness to mental health. Um, and it's going to be for tomorrow's game at 6:30 at OA. Um, and people are encouraged to wear green to, um, represent, uh, Active Minds. Um, they've also kind of started this new trend of sports affiliations, um, as many other clubs and organizations, um, I can speak for Eastern Wings of Hope, um, are doing the same as, you know, Eastern Wings of Hope is doing it during, uh, the spring with spring sports. Um, tomorrow is also Tempo Pops Night, um, where both the middle school and high school music programs will perform in the auditorium, um, from chorus and panache to chamber orchestras and a plethora of jazz bands. Um, so Oliver Ames will be hosting many events tomorrow from 6:30, and it'll be very lively. Um, as Mr. Carroll mentioned and Ms. Star just mentioned, um, 10 selected students from the middle school and me from the high school, um, went to CADCA in Washington, DC this past week. Um, we got to, like, partake in many social and informational events and conferences, um, to continue our efforts in substance misuse, um, across Easton Public Schools, um, in prevention entirely within the community. Um, at the Youth Leadership Forum, um, many opportunities availed as we got, even get to, uh, spend a day at Capitol Hill. Um, we met with, um, state legislators, well, like, their, um, their insistence, I guess. Um, and we met with Senator Warren, um, Senator Markey, and, um, our representative in the House, Jake Auchincloss, um, which was really, really nice, because it was a great experience for us all, um, not only getting to, like, meet and talk to our legislators, but we also, uh, got to, like, see what their priorities are and how we can, as a coalition and as a state, um, help them reach their priorities and of themselves. But yeah, overall, the middle school and high schools have, and high school have been, um, very lively with both student and community engagement.
Awesome update.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Any, um, any comments or questions from committee members from Marvel?
Awesome.
Yeah. Very robust, uh, covering all the key events going on. Thank you, Marvel.
I tried, I tried. The CADCA update will be coming, uh, soon with all of us, so we can talk about, like, our own perspectives and all of that as well.
Awesome. Nice. That'll be great. Look forward to it. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Okay. All righty. So slightly less exciting, uh, discussion and vote to approve the school committee's annual report to the town. Um, so the, for those who don't know, the town of Easton produces a very robust and detailed annual report. Um, and we submit a report from the school committee. Each of the town's departments and committees, um, submits their respective updates, and, um, historically, they've been published in a book, although I think, are we going just electronically?
Uh, they're still books.
Okay. There's, there's still books. I, I think I saw
There are still books. Yes.
About maybe going just electronic.
I don't know, but they're still books. I, yes.
Very, very robust. So, um, so anyway, so the, the school committee submission covers the school year from 2022 to 2023. So it does not include any activities that occurred, um, after June 30th of last year. Um, there is reference to the, um, there's reference to the professional status, um, that was, that's done in October of last year, but that's because we actually approved the professional status during the 2022 School Committee Meetings. So that was approved, um, during the last school year. So the names and all of that were announced, so that's why we include them. But all, the rest of the activity, uh, generally cuts off.
I want to say maybe four years ago, approximately, we, uh, approached a town administrator, and I asked, it was very difficult for us to do an annual report, that if you think of a particular school year, for example, if we did 2023, which just ended, we would have the end of the 2022, 22, 23 school year, the summer, and then beginning of the 23, 24 school year. It was very cumbersome and difficult to write and honestly to understand. And so the town, uh, has allowed us since to focus on school years. And so while the budget, uh, excuse me, that's a different book, while the annual report book will be the calendar year for all town departments, for the school department, it's the school year.
And I just want to comment, Jen, that you did a very good job writing this, being, and Jackie and I have both written these before. So you did a very good job.
Thank you.
Very impressive.
I was gonna comment that it was very well-written. I don't know who wrote it, but thank you.
Very, thank you, Jen. Thank you. Well, and Nancy, uh, did some proofreading.
I did.
And some edits, so thank you.
Well, I, I'm not sure if I did correctly, but yes, thank you.
Team effort.
Team effort.
It is a, is a responsibility, there's a gift bestowed, bestowed upon the chair. And so.
Yes. So, um, so does anybody have any edits, comments, questions about it? It is due to the town by February 15th, which is why we have it on our agenda today.
Well, I make a motion. We accept it.
Waisman, second.
Okay. And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Waisman, yes.
Star, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Persio, yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you, everybody. Glad that's done. Uh, next up is public comment. So would, we have two members of the public here, if anybody would like to make additional comments. Uh, all righty. So on to superintendent notes. Dr. Cabral?
Okay. I was going to list some activities. Marvel mentioned some, and I'm sure you are going to mention others. I heard Kelly already talk about one tonight, so I'll, I'll defer to you guys on that. I will stick to the most recent DEIA community meeting. We had that this week. We had great attendance again at Blanche Ames. I want to thank everybody that participated. We were able to take part in a Back to the Future protocol, which we do with many constituent groups as part of our strategic planning process. We were able to get a lot of great information from that that will be used. We're going to share it with the action team for the strategic planning, and it will be incorporated into the plan. So we thank everyone who participated. The next DEIA regularly scheduled community meeting is actually going to be online. We're trying to look at ways to diversify the way we hold them so that more people can hopefully attend. So we hope that people who are not able to come in person will be able to attend that virtually. That will go out, that information will go out from Carol Perez, Director of DEIA, as it gets closer. It will be next month. The girls' cross-country team was recognized at the State House today. We want to again thank Senator Timolty for hosting all of our championship teams. Uh, today happens to be the cross-country team. He's very generous about inviting families and friends and, and townspeople to come and support them. So we want to thank him for that and, um, hope that they all enjoyed their experience at the State House today. We are very happy to say that we are members of MPDE, which is Massachusetts Partnership for Diversity in Education, and one of their initiatives is an annual diversity job fair. And we are hosting it this year at the Blanche Ames Elementary School in March. So we're going to have over 50 school districts here, and we're going to coordinate that event and hopefully ha, uh, attract a lot of candidates to join us. Anybody can come. It is focused on reaching out to diverse candidates, and we're hoping that not only will people be able to be on our campus, see our campus, but, um, we're creating an opportunity for our colleagues as well, so that all of us can try to, um, recruit people. We are actually going to try something a little different. We've offered some breakout spaces for onsite interviews as well. So that information will be coming out to prospective candidates. We're happy about that. I spoke about strategic planning. That work is continuing. Um, there is going to also be an OA multicultural celebration event that's coming up on February 7th from 2:30 to 3:30 in the library at Oliver Ames. Um, hopefully people can join us for that. And other than that, we've been completely engrossed in our budget work. We're hot in that season. I wish the news were a little bit more exciting. Unfortunately, we're seeing sort of a confluence of events that are creating, um, a perfect storm in terms of the ESAR grants coming to an end this year. We are seeing that some of our entitlement grants that are coming in for next year are being reduced. For example, our Title I grant has been reduced by over $150,000 just for next year.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
Sorry not to interrupt.
Sure. That's okay.
Is it reduced because they're just reducing money, or is it because of our population?
It's because of our poverty rate in town. Title I in particular is linked to our poverty rate. And there are three components to Title I, two of which, the district must be over 5% in order to qualify. We are usually hovering between 4.8, 4.9. Last year, we did go above 5.0, and this year, we've gone under that again. So it's very hard, always with grants, but certainly, uh, with grants of this nature that are connected to metrics that we can't control and we honestly can't predict, because we have no idea. $150,000 is three or four interventus. That's teachers, that's, so we're, it puts more pressure on the operating budget to keep those programs going. So, so it's one of the many considerations. We also are finding that the town's revenues have all come in under what they expected. So that creates, um, sort of a strangle on the resources available to us there. And the state aid has been not officially decreased, but the most recent, uh, projections are that the $60 per student we received last year is going to be $30 per year this year, which is a reduction, again, of over $100,000. Just to put that in perspective, that means that while the world is facing, um, inflation at higher and higher rates, we are literally getting $30 per student from the state as increase to educate our students. That is just a little over, it's about $105,000 per year for 3,400 students and 607 staff members. So resources are declining, needs and unfunded mandates are increasing. And so you're going to be hearing a lot about the budget in the next couple of months. I just wanted to make sure that we have very realistic expectations of where we're going. We're going to fine-tune that and get that to you, uh, as I said, in, mostly in March and April, hoping to have a balanced budget with the town by the end of April. And I should have led with that and ended with the celebration. Remind everybody that we're having an OA multicultural celebration on February 7th. That's it.
Any, uh, any questions, comments for Dr. Cabral? All right. Thank you. Next up are assistant superintendent notes. So Mrs. Pruitt.
I have so much more to say. No, kidding. Um, I've been speaking enough today. Um, I do want to highlight that we do have our next STEAM team meeting on Tuesday, February 6th at 4:30 in the Blanche Ames Professional Development Room at the top of the ramp through the library. We are, we are changing the time to 4:30, hoping for a better turnout. Um, this is an experiment. The meetings were traditionally at 6:00 or 6:30, and we are moving them earlier, hoping that, um, more people can attend. During that meeting, we will be planning our, continue planning our, um, PK through two STEAM night, save the date, May 3rd at Blanche Ames. The first year we will be hosting at Blanche Ames. We're very excited. Um, times and more details to, to come. Um, and then also, just to let you know, as I had shared previously, I would, uh, during the presentations, we have been immersed in data meetings for the past two weeks. Um, and we are really excited about the progress that we're seeing. Um, the conversations with the teachers have been really honest. They have been really forthcoming about some of the difficulties they're having with some of the implementation of the, of some of our programs. Um, but they are open and brainstorming and listening to each other and persevering, and they're doing a fabulous job. So I just want to commend them. And then lastly, I did neglect to note that, um, I want to thank publicly Olivia Ramos, who helped with the compilation of the data today for tonight's presentation. the data today, for tonight's presentation. She's just been really just such a wonderful addition to our team and has just really shared so many resources that she knows of and how to really work smarter, not harder. And we're really excited about all the additions that she's bringing to Easton Public Schools. So, thank you.
As our new Director of Instructional Technology.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Great, great. Any questions, comments for Pruitt? Great, thank you. And next up, School Committee Notes. Nancy, anything this week?
Just thank you to Kendall Craig, Wings of Hope, for the survey, and the people that made the questionnaire, made the survey, because I know that a couple of years ago, that was quite dicey. And then also to Marvel, my goodness, have a good time and enjoy that bus ride home or the plane ride, whatever you're on, I don't know. And that was good that you met everybody in the legislative branch. That's wonderful. And thank you to Jen for doing that report. And there's a lot going on at the high school tomorrow, as she said. So that's it for me. Thank you to everybody.
That's great. Jackie, do you have any updates for this week?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Okay, all right. Lauren?
I actually don't have any updates. All of mine have been mentioned.
Okay.
All right.
Kelly, do you have anything for this week?
I just want to say that on behalf of some of the middle school girls, they were very excited that the girls' basketball game was held first at back-to-gym night tonight, and that they won. But it is nice to see that balance struck, as it has sometimes been challenging in the past. And because I represent a very unique group of people, just want to let everyone know that there is an information session scheduled for those who are going into kindergarten next year, from March 14th, because we're getting ready to start registration for that. And there's, of course, been a town Facebook group put together for all of the parents for 2037. I can't believe I'm saying that aloud, but I am one of those parents, so I will say it. And lots of great events going on tomorrow night. And thank you, everyone, for all the presentations tonight.
Can I jump in one more time?
Of course.
The event at Blanche Ames on the Sunday was wonderful. The movie has been added to redone. That was wonderful. And I thought it was a good turnout. I did. So, and your son was there.
My son was there, and he is proudly telling people about the person that his new school is named after. So he learned a good amount, actually.
There you go.
There's a whole movie about her. He's very proud. He's five, for those who don't know. And was very excited about that.
Yep, that was, that was a really great event. So thank you to everybody who worked on putting together the movie showing and tours. It was really lovely to have some of the Ames family and some family members of some of our district leaders in attendance so that we could show off the school. And kudos to Dr. Cabral to being the most enthusiastic tour guide. Most enthusiastic and most knowledgeable, no shade to any of the other folks who've led tours that I've been on. But yeah, she's a pro at that. So it was delightful. In addition, so Girls Cross Country is at the State House today. My understanding is boys will be visiting next week.
Correct.
Also, so thank you to Senator Timmelti for extending invitations to both teams. I'm sure it'll be a great event next week when they're able to attend. The Mass Association of School Committees is offering a virtual lunch and learn tomorrow on Proposition Two and a Half. So I know I'll be attending that. If any of you haven't been able to register but are interested, you can just go on the website. I think we know a lot about it, but it's always good to get a refreshment, stay on top of all of that. And then, in other somewhat dry news, because I've got all the exciting ones, the Budget Subcommittee met last night. That meeting was, I believe it's available on demand for anybody who would really like to get into the nitty-gritty of where we are townwide as a budget. But there was, the Community Comparison Report was shared at that meeting, and this is a report that was emailed to all of you and will be available on the town website. It's a very enlightening and eye-opening exercise that compares Easton's revenue and spending in different key areas with a group of comparison towns and then also our immediate neighbors. And it carries for some of the deep dive that was done during the operational audit in 2017, and also has comparisons back to several years before that. So for, as we go through budget season, it's always really, I think, useful to have a good baseline of kind of where we're starting, which, surprise, is behind most of our peers. So, it is what it is. So anyway, we have a baseline. It's out there. Go look at the report. It is good stuff. And thank you to our partners on the town side for doing all of the work to get that comparative info together. It's very helpful. All right. And we've got that wonderful Tempo show tonight, tomorrow night. So hopefully, we'll see a lot of folks there. So it was a good night. All right. So our next meeting is
February 15th.
Okay.
At 6:00 PM.
All righty, so here in the lecture hall and online. And with that, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Don't move, Loomis.
Can I get a second? All right, roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Or Persio, yes?
All right. Have a good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.